We actually set our agenda, the consent agenda. I think, um, I think we'll actually be all set. It sounds like they'll kind of work it out. Maybe come back to us in two weeks when we meet again, so we can just simply set our agenda item. Pure and simple, but we'll keep our ear to the ground closely and to the dates of those new two important, two important meetings.
So one other thing, because we're still on the consent agenda. I think we might have a police chief search committee meeting before April 8th, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I'm sure we do. Yeah.
I think we approved them at the last meeting.
Yeah, but this just lists April 8th is the next one.
Because I think we approved the ones for March last time.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty regular right now, the police staff is pretty much as every other. Yeah, pretty much. I told my friends and family Thursdays, I'm gone.
I moved my daughter's field hockey to Tuesday and I was like, God, I don't have to take her anywhere on Thursdays.
All right. I do want to move on because I think we have a fair sized agenda here. I think that's it for consent agenda. We'll see what happens those two meetings. If we have to pull, um, except a meeting date for either, or especially the, um, the advisory. I'm moving on to number two, annual townwide litter pickup for April. Consideration of, of, uh, are that two different items consideration artists? Okay. So April wide, uh, pick up date for April. Is this simply, um, setting a date for that? I guess David or Diane, you know?
We're back. This is Catherine.
Hi, this is Kim Chester.
We came before you guys last year.
So I had just a little bit of information to add to this. We'll try to keep it as brief as possible. Just to give you an update, since we were before you almost exactly a year ago this month. We have some, um, my name's Kim Chester and along with Catherine Rokio and Eddy Mae Weiss, we are the founders of Sherburne Picks Up, which is created to raise awareness and accountability for litter wherever we encounter it. We want to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update. A year ago, we presented a concept for a month long April townwide cleanup, supported by an art installation of the Litter Letters Project, which consists of five foot rebar and chicken wire cages spelling out the word Y to be placed at the 16 and 27 split in March, filled with litter collected by our community in the month of April and dismantled at some point in May. The structure itself will be reusable for other purposes or the same purpose annually. Our goal is to raise the awareness of how much litter there actually is. And the, um, as some of the pictures that you're seeing now are areas around the United States where the Litter Letters Project Art Installation has been successfully deployed. We've spoken with the people in Colorado. We've spoken with the founder of the Litter Letters, Professor Rachel Hatley, and she's included some additional materials for us so that you could see it tonight. And thanks to the creative talents, the time and generosity and ingenuity of Sherburne resident Brian Phillips and his able bodied assistant, Mr. David Chester. Over the past two weeks, we've completed the design and the build of Sherburne's Litter Letters. And Catherine has got some pics here for us. This represents a $500 investment from private funds. Sherburne Picks Up is also working with Sherburne's newly appointed Sustainability Coordinator, Dorothy von Herter. And she is assisting in looking at grant funding for our project here in Sherburne. We're excited to promote, be promoting our program to the schools. And would like to, I'd like to invite Catherine just to talk very briefly about some of our activities over the past year and our social media presence and plans for the next 60 days. Thank you very much.
Any questions or can I dive right in? Just, just a couple of slides here. Um, we did, we did not have our pickup last year, but we did have a mini pickup in town over Thanksgiving weekend. And, um, these are just some pictures from that event. There's a couple pages of pictures here, people all in action. You want to die at that picture, but anyway, so, um, we have, we're geared up and ready to go for our April, April to 2021. We have run this whole program before. We have a signup genius, genius account. We've started to promote it and we've got, we're hoping to have 500 people sign up and help to pick up litter during the month of April. And we've been working with DPW all along. Sean supports what we're doing and happy to take questions. But we're in the middle of our full on slot of promoting the activities.
And we have, we're also coordinating with the Pine Hill School as well as the Dover Sherburne Regional School Systems. We're working with the Superintendent's Sustainability Committee. And, um, you know, very excited about getting the community involved. Catherine did an, and Eddy Mae Weiss did an incredible job with social media, putting this together in November, and we had over 76 families collect 100 bags of litter in one day just to give you a sense of the problem that we're facing in terms of litter.
So I have one question. When you, um, you put up the Y or the, um, the, uh, the letters there in the frame with the trash bags inside of it, which I think is pretty interesting. Is there any kind of social media campaign so people know what it is, like a next door or something like that?
Oh yeah, we will, we will. We kind of need it there, but we've been hinting at it for a while.
We wanted to actually get the build moving before we started talking about it. So our, our real rollout will be now, as soon as we put it in place, we will start to, you know, we're reaching out to some of the, the local press. It will start appearing. It can appear on the Keep Massachusetts Beautiful website as well as the Litter Letters Project, which goes, you know, internationally. So we'll start to get some great press on this and hopefully raise the excitement level.
That's good. Cause I think, I think it raises a lot of awareness and I think the social media will be huge. Just so people kind of know what it is. They don't just drive by us, but then they, you know, ask questions. A lot of cars, a lot of traffic goes past that split.
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
What can we do to help?
Let me get you a bag. And we're, we're going to invite people. We're going to set up a schedule. We're going to invite people to actually assist in the filling of these letters. The tops of them have cages that open. We're going to put together protocols and safety recommendations for how to put the litter in there. But it's, it's pretty exciting and impressive. Pike's Peak in Colorado shared with us their third installation of the Litter Letters. They spelled out the word resilient, and I think Brian Phillips and my husband would have killed me if I'd had more than three letters. But, um, we're really excited about the deployment.
But is there some vote that we can take to endorse this, to, to embrace it, to welcome it? What can, what kind of action can the board take to support this?
For sure. Your support of Sean as he helps us with this, both, you know, during the month of April, um, DPW has been amazing and helping us pick up. But also they're going to help us install these letters. So as long as you give that the support. I think you voted last year to let this all happen and then COVID sort of happened instead. So.
I, I guess I'd like to, I don't mean it to be a negative tone, but I love this project. I don't like the pictures because no one's wearing a mask. So I would expect anyone that's participated in this program, uh, because we're still under COVID requirements in town to be fully masked at all times.
Well, are, are, so in, in terms of installing the project or in terms of picking up? Cause we, we.
Any activities?
We have a whole COVID protocol around picking up that it's.
No one in these pictures is wearing a mask. I'm not sure when the pictures were taken. I just want to ensure that, that we also have COVID provisions identified in the project.
For the actual picking up and installing everything.
Every aspect of this project needs to follow a COVID precaution.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm very supportive of the initiative, but these pictures certainly don't depict that. If they were last fall, I find that embarrassing.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else?
No, good work. I just want to say good work. Um, I think you guys are doing a great thing here. And the litter in town is a problem and I'm, and I, and I happy to see that you guys are really taking the initiative and doing a great job.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is AM COVID-19 team update. I guess, who do we have for that? We have Zach. Is Daryl on here? But we just have Zach.
They're both here.
Daryl's here as well. We're both here. I have something very short, then I'll turn it over to Daryl. I think one of the last updates I gave, you know, we talked about just kind of like our call volume and our activity level. Our COVID related calls are down, which is a good thing. Our regular calls are kind of going back up to sort of pre pandemic levels, uh, which is concerning because in a, in a way, because that means people are out, you know, it might be people are out kind of, um, doing normal activities and things like that again, even though, uh, the pandemic is certainly still here. But, you know, we're still, uh, um, ready for any COVID calls that we might have. We're doing very well on our supplies and PPE. We actually just recently got a, another COVID related grant, which I think you'll have on your next agenda to accept them. Actually waiting for another grant just to, so we don't have multiple grants and multiple agendas. And, uh, we've actually recently requested some items from EMEA for sanitized, uh, hand sanitizer and sanitizing stations, uh, for some of the buildings in town. And I would think we'll be seeing some of that next week. And that's basically, uh, my part of the COVID update.
So Zach, I have one question and I'd also be good to you and Daryl. But I've had a couple of requests now to see if there's any going to be any more research of state or federal supplies of vaccines to local authorities to apply vaccines. Last I heard in the news, and I have a very superficial knowledge of this strictly what's on the mainstream media is, um, is that's not going to be as much. Yeah. Do you have any word on that? As if there's going to be any, uh, like I said, uh, further supplies, does the local authorities?
I could address that if you want, Zach.
Sure.
Cause the Board of Health spends a tremendous amount of time tracking this and attending many, many, many meetings on that from the White House. Team briefings that Ellen and I attend. From January 20th to now, it's gone from 8.6 million doses a week delivered throughout the United States to 15.6, I believe it is. Currently and for the next several weeks. So the amounts are going up tremendously. The, as I've mentioned before, the Defense Production Act, uh, was really ramped up. And they do give the kind of three week out projections. So that's what it will be. The Johnson and Johnson vaccine approval is also going to change that. They're expecting 20 million doses a week by the, starting the end of the month roughly. That's the current estimate. So that will be tremendously different. And then they're going to be looking at plans for how that gets distributed because the Johnson and Johnson does not have such stringent requirements for, uh, how it's stored and handled. It makes transport and everything else infinitely easier. But they may target places that don't have all the equipment that's necessary to go along with that and the delivery systems and what have you. So that's, um, still to be determined and it may, it's also being addressed at the state level. The DPH works very hard at looking at where should the doses be going? What's the most efficient way to deliver it? Really, right now, the situation as I see it is, the supply has not met the, the capacity that's in place now to deliver the vaccines, at least in Massachusetts. There's much more ability to deliver vaccines than there are vaccines. So this, the approach that the state is taking is that you want to approach it in a couple of different ways. One is to get the most efficient delivery and process people, sorry to say process, but administer as many shots in a day as possible. And that means these larger sites that are really good at doing it. I've heard nothing but really good reports from people who've gone to get their vaccines, uh, especially at Gillette seems to be a favorite among folks. So then the other side of that is there are areas where, uh, the population density is much less, such as in Western Massachusetts, the communities that are doing, uh, some vaccinations on a community level are the ones that are in more remote, very rural areas. They're out west and also on Cape Cod, but Cape Cod has Barnstable County Health Department, which is, again, it's county level changes the dynamic. They're very large, very well run. And they have the ability to do that. So, and it serves a different population. And then they're addressing the communities that are underserved for a variety of reasons. And so there have been extra efforts there, a lot of partnering with community health programs that do serve a different segment of the population. For example, Brockton, uh, recently opened. And, uh, people there didn't have the ease to travel to places that were more distant. So, um, they just approached it differently. However, we have a lot of places right around us. And in terms of, if your question is also, are you asking about the Sherborne community level, whether we would do it? Is that part of it?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's what the question was oriented toward was like our.
So here's, uh, part of it is how we fit into it and the Board of Health has discussed this and analyzed it for countless hours, really. So the, again, the requirements are very stringent. You need to sign in with the state to do that. They initially encouraged it and then changed to this model because of issues of delivery and speed of delivery and trying to get as many people vaccinated as possible. They went to focusing where appropriate, again, not the underserved in the very rural communities, focusing on larger venues. And that's worked really well. Massachusetts is high up in terms of, um, percentages of the population who's been vaccinated. So that's all good. For us, I think it would, just so people understand, us getting the vaccine would not mean that we would be able to vaccinate 40 year olds ahead of the rest of the state, just because we have a smaller population would not change who gets vaccinated and when. We also, if we opened up something in town, if you click on all of the locations around the state, with the exception of the ones such as the one in Brockton that are targeting an underserved population for reasons of equity. They're the only ones who can limit who comes. So if we had it in Sherborne, really anybody could sign up and you're signing up through the state system. So there's no preferential treatment at all for Sherborne residents. So that is a really important thing to recognize with this. And we wouldn't be able to do it as, as quickly. And we have a lot of locations nearby. So we have not applied because we could see that was not the preference either for the DPH for what they're doing now. But what we keep doing is watching for when it would be appropriate for us. The Johnson and Johnson opens up that opportunity. And also when there is more supply than the current facilities can handle, then maybe it would be worth everyone pitching in to add the extra shots in the arms. And related to that, we are, the thing that we're focusing on next is the state has come out with a program for homebound individuals. So we're working to identify who's homebound. In Sherborne, someone, people who cannot get out. So if anyone knows of people who cannot easily leave the house, you know, and then there are lots of qualifications over what that means. But people should feel free to contact us to see what it might mean for them. But who can't get out of the house, they will, someone will come and vaccinate them at their home. And there are a number of different paths that we can take to do that. So we're in the process of gathering the information for that and analyzing the options in terms of cost and timing and, and all the rest and flexibility. And again, anything, and the other thing to keep in mind is it's a very rapidly evolving landscape. So we're working on things and we always have to be ready for change with the new information that might come out.
So, oh, sorry. Sorry, I didn't even jump in.
Nope, that's ask, ask away.
Just one quick question that also came up. What is the status of like the state providing vaccinations to teachers? Of course, we specifically were asking about local teachers, but really in a general statewide as well.
So the, the current direction. But I don't know that it's been finalized, but teachers and other essential workers are up next. But there's a particular focus on teachers. And so we've also been checking in, uh, the, the Health and Hygiene Committee at the school has been investigating an option that was planned in the past, but they're not sure if it's changed. So that's being worked on. A way to assist with getting, uh, the DS teachers vaccinated, make it easy for them to do so. But it is a high priority. That is sort of the next really big priority nationwide, frankly. And they're looking to the Johnson and Johnson, I believe, to really help with that. And they're mobilizing the, or getting, I think I've mentioned to this, um, to your, at your meetings before that, at the federal level, they set up the pharmacy program to, at least early on, I want to say almost like a, a practice, it was functioning, but it's certainly not as large or as fast as the mass vaccination sites. However, they were working with the pharmacies across the country because they're well distributed. And because they thought that maybe when the Johnson and Johnson came along, that that would be a great venue. And they're everywhere, right? They're in almost every community or multiples in a community. And they're also thinking that they might be instrumental in helping to get the teachers vaccinated.
George?
Just to add to that, Daryl, just as my wife's a teacher and we're, uh, very aware of what's happening. The, because the federal mandate did say teachers are available and that the, they get their pharmacies do get their vaccines directly from the federal government. CVS is already allowing teachers to sign up on their website for vaccinations. And I know March 11th next week is when the state allows teachers to sign up. So that's, that's been the timing with them. As soon as, I know President Biden last week said he wanted to make the teachers a priority. And soon after that, CVS is allowing teachers to sign up and next week the state will.
Very good.
Yes. They, um, also the vaccine delivery, they're two separate issuances of the vaccine. So some goes to the state for dispensing. And then for the pharmacy program, the federal is sending it directly to the pharmacies that are part of their program.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the select board? If I go to the public?
Just, just to add to that, like CVS is vaccinating people as close as Bedfield. So it's, it's not far away either.
The only bad news I was going to tell you is you can't go to Fenway Park anymore. They're, they're moving it to, uh, it was because the parking's so hard there. It to Heinz Auditorium.
Yeah, the neighbors probably gouge a hundred bucks a day like to do on game day for the vaccine.
Exactly.
I see, I see a question from the public. Before I take that anymore from the select board. Okay. I see Stephen Constantine has a question.
Yeah, I've got a question for Daryl. Just, just out of curiosity, are we having stats or do you have any stats that show what percent of the town has been vaccinated already? And are we getting those on a regular basis?
I haven't seen that information yet, but I will ask if and when we're going to get that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Any other questions from the general public? And if you could use the raise hand feature, that'd be great. Otherwise wave at the camera. And for whatever reason, I can only see half the, what am I zooming thing?
All right. Well, while people are thinking of questions, I'll just mention that the board and, and subcommittees of the board continue to work on school reopening and planning for that. And also sports safety, um, reviews. And also we're working on the, what to do with the Woodhaven Community Room to make the air quality in there potentially better. And in an energy efficient way. So that's, hopefully I'll have more information on that at your next meeting or soon.
That's good. I do know the Woodhaven people, um, really, really miss that common room and the social gatherings that they have there.
Yes. And that's been a big concern of ours and a constant discussion, but.
And I think they get it. They get it is what it is, but just, you know, um, it's nice that we're, you know, furthering like those accommodations.
Right. And so I just spoke with Gino today. So we're going to look at whether we can sort of merge the sustainability efforts in town with an upgrade to the systems for that room. Because I was wondering whether, uh, air to air heat pump and also heat exchangers combined might be a way to address it because it's kind of a tough space in the way it's currently designed. And the systems that are and are not there now. So we'll see what we come up with on that front.
Very good. Thank you.
And so we're, Margot's on the call and we've been, Margot also attends the Board of Health meeting. So she's providing this with, you know, the pulse of, uh, Woodhaven.
Okay. I don't want to put her on the spot if she hasn't raised her hand.
That's okay. I'm good at doing it.
Okay. All right. Without any further on that, um, and thank you very much, Daryl. Uh, thank you.
I just want to, everybody remember, if you know anyone who's homebound, you know, contact us, contact the COA, you can contact the fire department, any of those, we're trying to funnel information in. And soon, because we might need to make some sort of decisions as early as next Friday, but we haven't received final word on that.
Thanks again. All right. Again, without further ado, um, we'll move on to agenda item number four, consideration appointments.
Well, well, hang on. Uh, this is where I was going to insert the.
That's right. So I'm sorry. It wasn't on my, okay. I didn't jot it down.
Sorry, Eric.
Yeah, please, uh, please go ahead. Jeff, talking about the PFAS testing.
Well, I'll let Daryl, Daryl's gonna cover that subject.
All right. So, uh, the, I don't know how many people are aware, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has a program where they're trying to encourage as many public water supply systems to do PFAS testing ahead of mandatory testing that's going to come out with the next issuance probably of the sampling schedules that all public water supplies get, which that means that in our town, there are also any of the public water supplies that we have, such as the well that serves Town Hall and the library. Uh, Woodhaven is also one, Leland Farms and Pine Hill School. So those would be the major public water supplies. So, uh, the requirement will come, but right now, if you do it a little bit early, they will pay for it. So we think that's a good opportunity to, it, it's inevitable. It's coming. There's nothing to hide from by not doing it and to take advantage of it will really be helpful. It does also include not just one test, but any kind of confirmatory testing. Say if you get a very, a low value hit and you want to know, was that a mistake or not? They will also cover that. The other thing is they are launching a similar program for private wells. And the town owns a number of private wells, I believe at the DPW, for example, uh, the fire stations also. And for that, that's a little tougher. I've tried to pin them down on whether we could get those town wells sampled, but they're, they've got their own system where they generated sort of a random selection of private wells throughout the town. And I believe they've already mailed out cards to people on that to the private residences. And it depends on how many folks sign up, whether there'll be any, whether we could add the town, those other town wells. And really what they're looking for are data points, but using wells that already exists. Because it's not likely, except under special circumstances, to be a contaminant that has come from only one residence. And it's, there are a lot of complexities with this program and I would encourage people, if you get a card, either call the Board of Health. And we're also working with the groundwater protection committee and there are people on that committee who are prepared to have detailed discussions with people about what it means to participate in the program. detailed discussions with people about what it means to participate in the program.
I just wanted.
But for the town, again, for the public water supplies, it is coming. And for us, it's not going to change anything. It's just going to move it up a year or something perhaps.
And I'll just recognize a second. I just want to make a quick comment and I'll recognize Paul. Just so people do know that, you know, PFAS is kind of the new contaminant, like MTB of the nineties and prechlorated early 2000s. That's a highly water soluble. And while not ubiquitous, it's found in wells and locations where where other contaminants are not found, does this ability to travel within groundwater? I personally with this thing would recommend, you know, anyone wants a private well tested to do those first and then do the town wells later because we do have the means to sample them late later if we have to. At least that's my recommendation with this here. Yeah, Paul.
So first I want to move approval of this project because it's it's a no brainer. And number two, I wanted to comment that anything and everything that we can do to make sure that our drinking water is safe for people who use our wells, we should do. And because this is a free program, there's no reason not to take advantage of it. And to the extent that adverse information comes to our attention, then we need to to fix the situation. Fortunately, PFAS is are easily remedied through carbon filters and the like. But hopefully that's not the case in Sherburne, that we have to deal with it. But we might as well know rather than play the ostrich and bury our head in the sand and not not want to know. So the motion is to move approval.
All right, we have a motion and I agree with what Paul said as well.
Second the motion.
Okay, moved by Paul and seconded by Jeff. Move forward. Just all in favor, George? Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I am I as well. I'm glad we can take advantage of this program.
Okay, I will let the folks at DEP know. And there will be some forms to fill out and that sort of thing. And who should I provide that to?
David, Dave Williams.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. And thanks for bringing this being flexible, bring this before us. So now onto agenda number four, consideration appointments. The first one is for the building department for various town buildings inspectors as requested by the building commissioner. And I believe Mr. Kenny is here. There we go. I guess that's a good one. The floor is yours.
Not much to report. We just have to do our annual appointment, which I believe Diane, if we got this right, we're we're going with a longer term on these appointments. So we don't have to keep coming back to see you all the time to do this again. But it's essentially the same group of people that we've had for the last three years in town since since I've been working here. Reappointing all the same electrical plumbing, gas, building inspectors help the town out. So it's a pretty straightforward ask.
So Eric. So if I could, first, let me say, I think we have a great group of inspectors and great building inspector. Second, I would say the proposal before us is to make the appointments indefinite in duration. And if I could, I want to put on my lawyer's hat, my town council hat and tell you there's a reason why you have terms like three years. And that is to terminate somebody who's got an indefinite appointment means you have to go through all kinds of procedures. You have to do hearings. There's all kinds of ramifications determining somebody who has an indefinite appointment. Whereas somebody whose term is up, you don't have to renew their term. So it's relatively painless on both sides. So for the protection of the community from liability expense, legal expense and the like, it is recommended. I consistently recommend this to communities that I I service town councils. So I feel an obligation to recommend it here that we do have some kind of periodic reappointment. So that if there was a bad apple, and I'm not saying there is a bad apple, but if there ever was a bad apple, then we have a way to handle it short of investing a lot of money in procedures.
Now, I have a question. Is that true if they're a non-contract employee? Because I mean, I'm actually an appointed employee in my municipality and I can just get fired. You know what I mean? So is that true though? If they're not a contract, I get it because contract, I know we obviously have the police chief issue and the state law protections in there. Contracts have provisions, have terms on how to terminate contract employee. Is it still employees at will, even though they're appointed? So is that is that that true even under that case?
These aren't employees that will. They're appointed for indefinite term.
But they're still they're not. There's no contract provisions. They don't have any extra protections like a contract. If you look to contract employees, we have there actually are provisions in there and on how to sever employee about hearings and stuff like that. I'm just not sure that applies to just a straight appointee that doesn't have a contract. And I'm not doubting you, Paul. I'm sorry about that, but I'm thinking about my own situation where I'm appointed and I can get fired.
David has his hand up if you will.
I just want to say that we were we had looked into this one time before about another employee with an appointment. And there was case law in the state of an accountant appointment actually winning their case for another three years because they were appointed by the board. So the appointment does hold job security that is is accepted by the courts, at least in these cases. You're still at will. You're still at will for a termination. Your appointment is still going, so that that needs to be addressed.
I think you have some background noise going on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But then just to clarify though, there when I think of employee at will, it's usually frankly, it's the easiest termination that there is. So maybe I'm just maybe I'm just my own confusion between the employee at will and appointee and appointed appoint, you know, appointed person is also without a contract, appointed at will. So you said there are protections versus just a standard employees that's not appointed as that will.
I'm not sure what you just said, but the the I know that the appointment holds weight in in making a terminated employee's claim of a wrongful firing. That's
If they don't have a contract.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion amongst the board?
Well, my, I guess I'm questioning now. I'm not sure what what are the terms now, just the facts, what are the terms now and what are we proposing? Is it a one year term as it's been done in the past? Is that right?
I believe they've always been a one year term and Diane was talking to me about could we go for a longer period of time? And it doesn't seem to be when we consulted with counsel, there didn't seem to be any restriction against doing it, but it doesn't matter to me particularly, you know, you can appoint me for six months or a year or 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 three years or indefinitely. I'll come back and visit you as often as you'd like. To redo this, it's not really an issue. So.
I'll tell you, I'm personally fine with a three year point. It seems to be everything that we do is three appointees. And that's not too often. You come back per each you know, selectments or select board member cycle and stuff like that. If 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 there's unease among the board, obviously it's uneasy among Paul. I'm still kind of fifty fifty on. I almost want to ask counsel a couple of questions on it. I have other peoples on on it. It does seem a lot to go from one year to indefinite. If there's any unease in that, you could consider a three year appointed appointments.
I I agree with you, Eric, with your assessment of employees at will, like that's kind of the idea of if somebody's not doing their job the right way, you can terminate them. And I don't and I'm not clear how an appointed to an indefinite term how easy or what what the ramifications would be if you had to get rid of somebody.
I just learned to let my own job probably has some more protections than I thought. How about you, Jeff? Do you have any thoughts in this?
What you said, I don't have a feeling either way. So my view would be I would go with whatever Paul recommended would be how I would make him vote first and then I'll follow. I'm not just saying that to be funny. I mean that to be.
No, I agree with you, Jeff. He's the lawyer. Take his advice.
Paul, what are your thoughts on like what I said, it's like a three year term, just because that's so standard among.
Three years, three years is good. If you want, you could you could say an indefinite appointment at will and specifically make it at will. I'm just not sure what the personnel bylaws say about probationary times and at what time does a person serve their probation and then become. So I haven't reviewed the Sherburne Personnel Bylaw. So it's always what?
Six months, Paul.
So you have a probationary period for six months and then.
But does that apply if it's an existing employee just reappointed? They still have another six months probationary period. They already did it, right? They did it years ago.
Right.
Yeah, but the 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 point is when you have a probationary period, that's when you're really at will. And then something happens at the end of the probationary period that gives you something more than at will. And what that more than at will is and means isn't clear without my doing a lot of legal work. So what I'm saying is the safest thing is to have a term and three years is is fine.
Okay. So is our motion in the board kind of modified emotion or motion on the board along those lines from the board?
I I'll make the motion that we I'm not sure if you wanted to list all the inspectors that we appoint the inspectors to a three year term and includes electrical, building, gas, and the one I can't remember.
As you got the list of inspectors as presented by Chris Ken.
Material as presented in the background material. For a three year term?
For a three year term.
I'll second that.
All right. So all in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I might as well. All right, Chrissy, in three years.
Thank you all.
And next is a public safety committee, Mark Roach for a team to expire in June fifteenth, twenty twenty four. All right.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, all right. Good enough. Motion and seconded. All in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I am I as well. All right, very good.
Thanks, Mark.
Absolutely. Number five is town meeting confirmation date and time, but it's really.
Just saying Eric, Mark Roach has his hand up.
Yeah, I was looking for. That's what I was. I was trying to find him.
I don't know. People have their camera on. They don't prioritize on my Zoom. You know what I mean? I have to go through multiple pages. If people could use the, what's it called? The virtual hand. Right. I always have it open. I can see everyone.
Mark, if you want to unmute or Jeff, do you have to unmute him?
I'm looking for where I can find.
Mark needs to unmute.
Oh, Mark, you need to unmute.
I don't hear him.
No, I I see him.
He's good now.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead, Mike.
Do I make an appointment with the clerk to get sworn in to this committee?
Oh, yeah. Yep. You talk to Jackie about that absolutely and make an appointment.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks for signing up.
Okay, so now we have agenda item number five, a confirmation date and time, but really, I believe we've set that date and time. This is really about voting quorum for the annual town meeting. We talked about it at the last meeting and continue this vote to this meeting. I know it's I don't think I'm going to speak on it, but it's my personal thought. I'd like to do what we did last year. I see Jackie's hand up, but what I'd like to do last year, these are twenty twenty five people. Jackie, yes, you're here.
Am I unmuted? Okay, so just quickly, George Fisk is on and he just wanted to quickly address the caucus situation. And then also I need to get back. You guys do need to vote the time and confirmation for town meeting, but George wanted to speak just for like thirty seconds or so.
Yeah, George, you on?
Okay, yes, I'm on. Thanks very much, Eric and Jackie. I got word a little earlier this evening that there was concern about the date that that the town caucus committee had most recently settled on. I can tell you, we've been back and forth a number of times and had settled on Saturday, April tenth at ten in the morning. But apparently that conflicts with the advisory committee hearings and clearly we don't want to do that. Apparently it was suggested that holding it the next day on Sunday at in in the afternoon might be workable. So that was suggested to me. I've contacted I've contacted Rick Novak and Janet Walsh and they and I've looked at my calendar. We're all free to do that. And I can check with Jackie about whether that will sit well with her time schedule of the dates that we need to have forward and backward. So the answer is that we're we're willing and happy to postpone it a day from the original date of April tenth to April eleventh at two in the afternoon, provided that 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 doesn't cause us any problems with any Massachusetts regulation. And Paul, I guess I would ask you is there anything you can think of that would prohibit us from doing that?
There is none.
Then we're happy to go with that if that helps solve a problem.
I think that sounds great.
There are laws that say for Sundays, you you can't be drinking at these meetings. So if you're having you're going to have to hold your liquor.
I'll I if I if I could, Eric, I could give you a very quick synopsis of how this will be different from others. And that is our intention is to hold it at Pine Hill School outside on the front steps. So we will be outside. And also we're going to try to move through this efficiently. But but meet the meet the requirements. So we will have people place different candidates, names and nomination. And we will take votes, but only in instances where there is a contest will we ask for nominating speeches. Otherwise, we're simply going to call for the nominations. If there's one for each position that's up, we will close the nominations, take the vote and move on. And they're also even in a contested situation, there will be no secret ballot. It'll all be by either voice or hand vote. And so it's it's different from the past, but it's a different day this year than it was a year ago this time.
Okay.
That's a quick on it.
And thank you for being flexible. I think that will work well on the eleventh.
Well, thank you, Jeannie, for letting me know so we could get this squared away.
The caucus is not on the agenda. So I don't know how much we can ask questions, but are there any questions?
Well, just a suggestion that we have a selectmen's meeting now on April tenth.
Good point. Very good point. I guess if we could put that on the agenda and I don't do any, I don't think we need to vote on that because that could also be included, frankly, next week's consent agenda as well. But at least let's put that for next week's consent agenda on the on the tenth. Very good point.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, George. Okay, I think it's back to Jackie.
Yeah, so thank you. So actually, just one, I I I know you all are aware that May fifteenth has been confirmed with the video and sound company. So we are all set. So actually, you guys have not voted a time for Saturday, so I need to to confirm just the May fifteenth date and vote what time and preferably if you could say that you want to have it at Butler Street. And that allows me to advertise it and let the residents know all the dates have been changed, et cetera. And then the second thing is is that if you would like to vote the quorum tonight, I did post it as required by the chapter twenty twenty, it was posted eight days ago on the website and also on Nextdoor. That there was a possibility that you would be voting to lower the quorum. So that's it.
First time, what did we do the last time? Was it like nine or ten?
It was nine, nine AM.
Nine AM, okay.
Oh, yeah, the quorum was.
I wouldn't want to go any earlier than that, to be honest with you. I think it's reasonable. I don't know. Any thoughts, further thoughts on the select board?
How about ten o'clock?
Any thoughts there? All right, do you want to make a motion?
I move ten o'clock at Butler Street on May fifteenth.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, how about thoughts on the on the quorum?
I think we should do what we did last year. I agree with you, Eric.
Yep.
I I also agree, but I we need the consent of the moderator. So is she on board here?
I didn't see her. I don't see her.
No, she's here. She's here. Can you finish dinner, Mary?
Yes. Yeah, moderator is on board with twenty.
Yeah, I want to hear her recommendations. So was
Yes, let me say that.
Okay, so I'd move to set the quorum for the twenty twenty one annual town meeting at twenty.
All in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
I am I as well. Very good. It's set in stone.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all. George Mary. Um, okay. Um, so number six is a consideration to authorize a town treasurer to issue a ban for the library project. Now, we're not going to talk about the ATM, which I still wonder why it's kind of in the same agenda item, but either way. Um, now, Jeff, if you want to talk about this a little bit, if I guess if the, and just, you know, so this came up actually at the, um, the Library Build Committee as well on Monday. And right now the agenda, although it couldn't be tweaked too much. What we've done here is if if you want detailed information about this, we actually have an executive session coming at the end of this meeting. We've modified the agenda um, within the forty-eight hour, outside the forty-eight hours, I should say, within, uh, with the appropriate timeframe to allow us to come back into open session. Um, there is some executive session items here about this ban. Jeff can talk better about the, um, the deadlines and Heidi can talk about the deadlines, why we need this and someone like that in kind of a generic sense. Um, but there is actually a presentation. We can talk detailed about it, but we do have to vote soon. And again, Jeff and Heidi can talk about those dates. So I, they're, one of the, it's two options. One, just vote now. Two, go to executive session, see a presentation, hear the details come out and then actually vote an open session and, um, or just, you know, and or have another meeting within forty-eight hours. I mean, that's how close it is. So maybe I'll, I'll kick it to Jeff. And if you want to kick it to Heidi, that's fine. You can talk about the timeframes here and maybe the urgency of this.
Well, uh, we definitely need to to borrow, uh, uh, further to to meet the cost of completing construction, which we know. I th- I actually think the best thing, you know, so that the issue is that Heidi needs around, you can correct me every day I missed state Heidi, six weeks or so to to get the borrowing in place. So we really do need to do it ASAP. And so the issue then becomes how much will we need to complete the project? So I think Brian Connolly and Mary Moore, uh, you know, that feeds into what Heidi's doing. So I think Brian and Mary, do you have something? I don't know if you want to talk generally or?
Yeah, it's Brian. Um, let me talk generally, uh, and and take under consideration what Eric said, and then Mary and Chris Kenny is on as well, both Library Building Committee members, and they can.
I think Jim Cole, Jim Cole is also on, I believe.
Him is good. Okay. So let me talk a little bit. I think last time, uh, what we did is on the processes on Monday at the Library Building Committee, as as Jeff and Eric referenced, we went through a kind of line item review and approval with the Library Building Committee as well as, uh, C H A, who is the project manager. And what that included was the latest O P M forecast, uh, through the end of February. And we also had a pretty robust discussion about contingencies, and and I'll talk more about that later. Uh, then also, uh, soon thereafter, we looked at the expenses paid to date by the town, uh, that Sharon has and reconciled that with the project budget. And again, we did that through January, and then we also got the February, uh, spend from Sharon. So we reconciled that through February. So I think we're, you know, at the end of February, beginning of March, we've got our project budget and our expenses paid to date by town all reconciled. We also reviewed this. We kept Heidi involved and reviewed it with Heidi uh, as we kind of iterated towards, uh, having, uh, these numbers. And then Peter Galatano, uh, from Advisory has been reviewing it as well. And, um, he he sent me an email just yesterday about his thoughts on it. He thought it was good work and, uh, the one question he had was, do we have enough contingency? Uh, and that, so that kind of leads into where we ended up on, uh, the amount of the, of funding we would need. And this, the the number would be, uh, and I'm going to qualify this a little bit. So this does not include, uh, any potential litigation costs. And it also doesn't include a hundred thousand dollars that Heidi would have as kind of a buffer as as kind of a at the treasurer's discretion. You could do that with, uh, underwriting with bond council. So it's two point five eight four million in what, um, and what that covers is, uh, extended period with design consultants and a lot of the soft monthly costs. We're assuming that we'd continue to need project management, design consultants and legal, project legal expenses through, uh, July. And then we're also, uh, have some of the additional construction costs. So the two contingency areas that we, uh, agreed upon on Monday at the Library Building Committee was two hundred thousand for construction contingency. And we also included a hundred and fifty thousand for what we're calling project impact. And project impact is some costs driven by the project, uh, but not specifically in the project budget. So what that includes is we have a builder's risk insurance policy that, uh, we need to renew in April that the town had to take out once we uh, went to the takeover agreement. So that's thirty-three thousand. There's also the septic repair, the, uh, the Department of Public Works was estimating that because the septic system has had, uh, you know, heavy machinery on it and hasn't been used for years, that it's it's prudent to assume that that's, that's going to have to be replaced and repaired. And then there was also, uh, fifteen thousand dollars in legal costs that were project related from uh, April and May of twenty twenty that were not properly classified. So we we classified them back into the project. So that's that's the, uh, two million five hundred and eighty-four thousand. That includes the construction contingency and the related project costs. It does not include a hundred thousand for kind of the treasurer's discretion, and it does not include any estimate of litigation costs. We do have, uh, cash on hand for the project of, uh, one million eighty-six thousand five hundred and forty-three. So what that would do is that would bring our funding costs, again, not including any litigation or, uh, the treasurer's, um, kind of buffer there, the the amount that would need to be funded, we one million five hundred and four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay. Are there any, um, kind of reports or comments from kind of library team before I bring it back to us? Okay, I guess, uh, uh, Jeff or Heidi, and maybe I missed in there. Do you want to talk anything about the urgency of this vote? The timeframe scheduled this vote?
Well, there's two. I Heidi can probably provide the idea that we're, one thing we're funding is, uh, uh, a new borrowing to cover the remaining costs to complete the project. The second thing is we'll also the grant, remember, we're getting a grant from the state, one more uh, grant from the state of around, I don't have it in front of me, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or so. We have to renew that borrowing. We borrowed that for a year and we have to, um, renew that, um, existing loan agreement. So Heidi, do you want to elaborate a little bit?
Uh, sure. I was trying to get some type of an approval today that would buy us some leeway here, like whether you'd be comfortable voting up to a certain amount of money to borrow till this fine tunes because we have a lot of moving pieces and that in another two months, the number may come down. We don't know the final numbers, but I will have had to have had money to pay bills during that time. So that's why I'm also thinking it might be good to do a ban on maybe five hundred thousand of this and try to long-term bond about a million of it if we can and get another long-term bond in soon while the interest rates, which are starting to slowly creep up, but they're still really attractive. I'd like to actually include some of the ATM articles with it, so I have to work with the cash flow of the library to see how much we can go through now. What can we get by the end of June, beginning of July to try and do a long-term bond of grouping and bundling a whole bunch of items together? So would the board be willing to do an a motion to approve a borrowing of up to a certain amount of money? Um, that would allow us some leeway to get the project done and borrow.
We'll probably be looking for a recommendation. You think up to five hundred thousand? And just because I think, you know, we'll be looking for a recommendation along those lines.
Um, I, well, I think that the concern I have is if that we we find out in the project that we're going to need, they're going to be, if they end up completing and moving in in May, we may have have actually the bulk of the amount of money left, five hundred won't be enough. So I'll have to know in the next couple of weeks with the library trust how they're running. So I'd almost say if they said they need one point five oh four three five nine, you know, that's probably the money I'd be looking at asking unless you want to add some contingency onto it and say up to one point six million or not to exceed one point six million.
I was, that's exactly the number I was just going to suggest, Heidi, because the thing is, you know, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brian and Mary, but you know, they have, uh, initial occupancy can start, I think, maybe in June, we think. Well, you know, it's not determined, but we're going to have a lot of the construction completed, uh, by the end of May, uh, by the current schedule. And we have additional landscaping and paving and some other things that will be occurring after that. But you know, I think they have what they refer to as the soft costs, which is some of the project management and the rental of the community center through the end of July. Is that correct, Brian?
We go month to month, uh, after May.
Okay, but the the amount of one point five million, does that include through the end of July?
It does.
Yeah. So so that's what we basically have. We have, you know, hopefully, uh, largest percentage of construction completed the end of May. And then we have, you know, a little bit more construction work. So I don't think five hundred thousand is anywhere near enough. I I think we, I would say we can, um, vote on one point six million, which gives Heidi a whatever it is, a ninety-five thousand dollar buffer over the one point five, whatever it is. And then she can use her judgment based on also the invoices that are coming in because sometimes the timing of the invoice is not linear. You know, for example, when we got the windows delivered, that was one big chunk because it was, uh, you know, it was a supply of materials. So, um, I think one point six would be the number I would recommend.
All right. Is there a, is there a motion on the board relative to that?
Yeah, I would move that we authorize Heidi to short-term borrow, uh, 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 bond authorization amount of one point six million dollars to complete the library construction work.
So if I could ask a question before we vote?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So I think all the voters who are listening to this meeting would benefit by being told what the current status was. You mentioned, Jeff, for example, the windows arrived and were being installed and so on. Are all the windows now in?
Um, it turns out that there, all the standard size windows are in. If you drive by it, you'll notice there's some unusual ones that are in what's called Nora's Treehouse at the end that are a little bit unusual in shape, triangular. So, um, the windows are largely in, but there's a few of the special sized ones that are not in yet. Um, and there, so that has, we have a li- a li- some more roofing work to do on the parapet that needs to be completed, flashing and uh, roofing along the parapet, which is along the edge of the roof. Um, they're doing interior finishes. They're installing carpet. Um, you know, it 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 looks terrific inside. I think it's very positive in terms of, uh, um, the quality of the work. And, um, you know, now they can do, there's working on some of the finished trades in terms of millwork and that kind of thing. So like I said, the current schedule, I I don't think we got one at the, the L B C meeting was, um, I think that was a week ago, wasn't it? It was this week. I've lost track. But anyway, I think it's still showing.
It's only four days ago.
End of May, I know. Sorry, Jim.
That's fine. That's fine.
Uh, end of May is still the target completion, and I think it's really, um, doable. The, Jim, you want to, uh, elaborate?
No, I think I I think we have not received a, uh, an updated schedule. So I would, I would say that Jeff's encapsulation there captures, um, the current state of the project, Paul. We are hoping for the end of May and, um, we feel good about the the way the project's progressing and we feel good about the quality of the work that's being put in. And I think everyone should, um, should know that. Paying particular attention to a lot of the details, um, and Sean has been a great asset with regards to looking at 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 the project on, um, sort of on a weekly basis, you know, day to day when he has time. And, um, there are some things that Jeff mentioned with regards to the roof and the flashing and things that we're tidying up, but need to be addressed. But I think overall, the project is is going in a good direction.
So the big news that I'm hearing is that we're going to finish the library in our lifetime.
Not yet.
This is wonderful.
I mean, I I think I I will just interject and add one more thing. I think what what we all do as a team, um, everyone that's on on this call that's involved in the project is, you know, you kind of look at the project and where the risk profile is on it now, and I think it's relatively, uh, low. It's not zero until you finish a job. Nothing is ever zero, but I think we're in the home stretch. So Paul, I think, um, we'll definitely get it done in our lifetime. So I.
And you guys talk about going, obviously, the exterior with the masons going well, the cedar has been going on, the side has gone on, and the interior has been improving. Yeah. I fully agree that I think it's been in a, it's going in the right direction. Absolutely.
Well, I just want to add, I mean, the trustees and the L B C have just been working like mad the last two and three weeks to come up with these numbers just to support Heidi, but also to push for completion. So nights and weekends have been spent by that whole team. So certainly in indebted to them.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion by Jeff Waldron to actually for a one point six million dollar ban. Do we have a second?
Second?
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll do the roll call vote. All in favor of, uh, George?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I am I as well. All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, we may have further discussion executive, but thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Item number seven, I think, I think this is the last of our, um, operational budgets, but consideration FY twenty-two on this budget and, uh, twenty twenty annual time and warrant article, and that's for the Conservation Commission right there. And I believe, uh, Kelly is on here to, uh, kind of cook is on here to speak on this.
Um, very briefly, Eric, thank you very much for inviting me. Thank you to the select board for a lot of support in the past. Our proposed twenty-two budget is virtually identical to the fiscal twenty-one budget with the exception of the COLA. And rather than, um, going down through the justification we submitted, I'd much rather, uh, pass it back and answer questions.
Well, everyone has their background material, and we have, they see, um, more or less without, with exception of the COLA, the flat funded, um, operational budget. Are there any questions?
Well, just a heads up.
Yeah.
So one of the issues that the board discussed, uh, some weeks ago was an article for flood zoning. And as part of that article and part of the model by by law that is being pushed or was being pushed by the former administration calls for a great expansion of responsibility by the Conservation Commissions and all the towns in the state. The idea is that anything that's on a flood map as a flood zone would become jurisdictional to the Conservation Commission. So if you're in a flood zone, anything you need to do with your house, well, you've got to go see the Conservation Commission. I'm saying this as a heads up because at some point, unless the Biden administration withdraws that that model by law, we're looking to see a, a big expansion of responsibility of the Conservation Commission. And so while it's good, the budget this year is is, uh, pretty lean. I would expect next year it's going to be substantially more.
Paul, who can the commission talk to to get more information about this?
Well, it's in a state of flux. I'm not sure the answer to that. There is a, uh, model by law that I think is posted on a, on a website. And it's, again, part of that, they annually, they give us new maps and the new maps indicate what they call is the flood zone. But the model by law says that the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction is no longer wetlands. It is over this flood zone.
Wow.
Yeah, wow. So in many towns, like half the time or a third of the time, all the property owners have got to go get an order of conditions for anything they do uh, in connection with their property. So it's a, it's a big, uh, transfer of, uh, transfer of territory, if you will, to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commissions across the state. But it's not clear that the Biden administration is going to carry forward that, that plan. So we've got to let that play out a little bit. That's one of the reasons why the town deferred things for a year. So rather than adopting a bylaw right now that transfers all this jurisdiction to the Concom immediately and then when that gets enacted this year, we'd have to fund all that extra attention and work. The idea is to put it off to next year. Maybe it won't happen.
Paul, let me ask you a question. In our town, what, just because that would be very concerning if that many more people had to go in front of their Concom. What is in a, what, how many flood zones do we have? Do we have a lot of flood zones in Sherburne? I just am not.
I don't know.
I know, I know along the Charles River, I'm sure, but.
So I'll, I'll say my sense is not as much as other, just because the town that I work in is more, more of a low lying town, has a subway river cut right through the middle of it. You don't see a same topography. We are bounded by a river. But if you ever noticed, like our side of the Charles River almost all has cliffs and hills right up to it. My sense is it's not quite as bad as other communities. I will say Framingham has a lot of flood plains actually. And if you look, it's low lying, it's has like three or four manmade reservoirs, has quite a few natural lakes, and it has a river cut, a major river cutting right through the, really right through the middle of it. I, I doubt it, but I honestly, I've not seen a flood plain map of, of Sherman. You know, my sense is it's not that bad. Also any discussion on this here, or at least a discussion relative to the budget, since we have not adopted that by law and we have taken a wait and see approach of Biden administration. I will not affect this on the bus budget. And if, if it does come in and all of a sudden there's an emergent need, I think it gives us a heads up that we have to make a change, we'll make a change to allocate funds. But it sounds like a flat budget as proposed is appropriate.
So Eric, Tom Trainor's on the groundwater protection committee, and I think he'd like to, to speak.
Okay. If people could use a virtual hand, I can't say that enough.
He's, he's got it. He's got it up.
Really?
Yeah.
I can see it.
Thank, thank you, Jeff.
I'm scrolled down. I'm scrolled down. I'm sorry.
No worries. Sorry, our team.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom, please.
Thank you. Now, I just wanted to add a, a comment, what, what you and Paul were just talking about in terms of Sherborne and flood zones. One is there's a very large modeling of the Charles River watershed flood zones going on right now. And Sherborne is part of a large grant funded through the town of Natick in the Charles River Watershed Association. And I'm also on the Energy and Sustainability Committee. And it's through that committee that Sherborne has an involvement with this grant. So we're supplying a lot of information about Sherborne's infrastructure, stormwater and everything. And that should, that should produce by the end of the state fiscal year, June 30th, some very detailed and up to date flood plane models. In particular, much more germane to the future than the current FEMA maps that are really backward looking documents versus the, this current grant is looking at the expected more severe storms and the effect of climate change. So I just wanted you aware that that works going on in the background.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Or any more discussion about the Conservation Commission budget?
Well, I have a sort of a general issue. The general issue is that we had decided that we weren't going to take any action on any specific budget. So we saw the whole thing. And I'm beginning to think that what that does is kind of drops the ball on providing leadership for the community. We're the executive branch of the town and it seems, seems to me that we ought to be proposing a budget to advisory, the same way the, the President of the United States proposes a budget to Congress, that we should figure out what, what our departments need, what our, what the town needs and have something that we buy into and we should be presenting it and advocating it with advisory and with the voters. And by taking no action on any of the budgets and by not having any votes at all, whether on the conservation budget or I know the Veterans Agent or whatever. I, I'm beginning to think that we're not, we're, we're missing an opportunity to provide leadership from the executive branch as opposed to the legislative branch. Advisory is part of the legislative branch. But it'd be like the, the President of the United States or the governor of the Commonwealth saying, I'm going to leave it up to the legislature to decide what the upcoming budget is. Don't we have some responsibility to embrace these budgets, like the Concom's budget and the Veterans Agent budget and whatever?
We talked about this process before. I recognize George because he can read it rates. I know we talked about this process a couple of meetings ago.
Um, we don't not take a vote, Paul. We're, we wait until we see everybody's budgets together. I, I've never advocated of not taking a vote and not taking leadership. I think it's a matter of, I don't want to vote on Sean's budget before we've seen everybody else's budgets that we report to because I think that's irresponsible, not looking at the big picture. If we go ahead and vote on Sean having a 10% increase and then we realize everybody else is asking for a 10% increase too, what are we going to do then? Because then you're going to stand up and say, well, we can't have that kind of tax increase. So we can't vote on these in a silo. I think we should, now that we've seen all the budgets, yes, we absolutely should vote on them and make suggestions and before it goes to advisory. I'm not, I, I don't know where you're getting the idea that we don't vote on it and we let advisory decide. We've never
We have all, all these meetings and, and we hear these budgets and we never, we haven't
Because we haven't heard them all, Paul. How do you consider a budget if you don't know what the big picture looks like?
Well, we, I'll say we did talk about making a holistic vote at the end of this, and I think the discussion line by line, as we look at them to give them a time. We obviously cannot look at every single budget in one night. There's just no opportunity to do that. But it has allowed valuable discussion that's allowed, I think, allowed budget makers, the detail makers to adjust the budgets. For example, we just got an email from Historic District Commission. They are withdrawing their, their request for funds for the Tricentennial signs. And that's solely based on the discussion done before us here with the select board. So, so far I've been satisfied with this process and I, we do intend to vote before it goes before advisory. I don't think there's any other discussion with it.
Yeah, I think we should schedule it on our next agenda. Now that if we've seen all our budgets, let's schedule a vote. Now that we've reviewed them all and we can see where we stand, let's, let's review them all as a whole and make a vote and support them before it goes to advisory. That, that's the right way to do it.
Support them or not, I didn't want to say.
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly. We may have some that we think, hey, look, you know, we're, we're over 10%. We got to ask a few of the departments to cut something back because we support them increasing in other places.
Good. Thank you, George. Thank you, Eric.
Uh, Jeff.
I guess, you know, in my advisory experience, and I'm ready to be corrected, we typically vote during the advisory hearing sometimes. And the reason I suggest that is two reasons. One is we then can have the benefit of the public speaking as we present the items, you know, and get input from people. But also to George's point, we don't, until we know the, the advisory model that they use, as you well know, includes what the anticipated growth is and what the tax rate will be so that we know what we can afford. And we know, you know, other things like how much money we're putting into reserve fund and how much money we're contributing to OPEB, reduce the OPEB liability. So we don't, we really don't know the bottom line. It's just what I'm saying. We don't know what we can afford. So we don't have anything to compare it to. Even if we compare one budget to another, we don't really know what we're up against in terms of revenue.
That's true. I still see a point to, so, so you vote. Let's say we vote before it goes to advisory or recommendation. But then we also meet with advisory. We can't adjust it as we see things. That I don't think that's the end of the world. You know, if we say this will recommend, then things come up. We said, okay, maybe we want to look at something different there. I do want to recognize Sean as I've scrolled up and I can see his virtual hand.
He probably wants to scold me for talking about his 10% increases.
Can you hear me? Yeah, no, I did raise my hand when you did that. The real one, not the virtual one. Notice I did bring with me, I did bring with me the, hold on, I mirrored the Tricentennial sign.
Yes, I
in my background, but I, I did want to mention, as somebody that's been on both sides of this discussion, the problem I always had and still have with the select board waiting till the advisory hearing is you miss the opportunity to, to give the department heads a directive. Let's say the select board decided they actually want to plow all the roads this winter rather than two thirds of them. That, that should come from the select board. You, like Paul said, you're the executive branch and, and I could carry that with me to the advisory meeting so that when I'm one person and there's nine people saying, we only want to plow half the roads and we're going to cut your budget because of the tax rate. And I can, I can sit there comfortably and say, well, that's fine. But the select board gave me a directive that we're going to plow three quarters of them. So that's my budget and that's what they told me to do. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean you can't change your, your vote or you couldn't ask me to change it. But there, there's sometimes, there's years where I see advisory three times in the court, since I, from the point when I create the budget to when we get to that hearing. So the, the budget might change drastically and, and it may be more influenced by their opinions than yours. And, and that I don't totally agree with that.
Yeah, I think, I think we should vote before the advisory hearing, but I don't think we should vote before we've heard everybody's budgets.
Yeah, I agree with George. I, I agree with George. It's a holistic view of it. And also thinking six inches is more your plowers of your road, by the way. Even though I'm not, I'm not going to budget because it's the one budget you can blow by state law. So anyways.
Now I have my directive.
All right. So I do want to stay focused on the Conservation Commission ominous budget as presented before us, before I meet on the nine other items left tonight. Is there any more discussion specifically about the Conservation Commission budget?
I think it makes sense. It's within, it's within guidance. So I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah, okay. I mean, no vote is necessary as soon to we do the whole thing. So are we ready to move on to the next agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And good conversation. We will, I'll actually work with David and Diane to bring before soon the budget as a whole. Okay, final number eight. These are the warrant articles. Various warrant articles are up here. Some, Diane, are these all, or David, are these all citizen petitions or some, some are, I guess, council agent, sorry, town clerk. Yeah, we have some other ones here. So I was thinking about this. We have advocates for each one of these agenda items. I do want to limit it. If someone has a long presentation, maybe it's more appropriate for the Saturday meeting that we meet on or I will say we'll play, we'll play it by year, each one by year. And just to confirm, are we voting on each one of these to support or not support?
My impression was we're voting whether they should be on the warrant or not. But I may be
David, you have to unmute.
Yeah.
You can, you should just be voting to add it into the warrant or remove it from the warrant, but not be voting support or, or against at this time. It's not typical for you.
If that's the case, I'd like to at least, you know, limit it that if someone has a large presentation, might be more appropriate to be before advisory or what have you. If it's not far, if it's just on the warrant or not, I think it would take a lot for something not to be on the warrant. You know, it may be part of the discussion. I think that'd be a collective agreement, frankly, with the advocate and us. And at least that, that's my guidance. Unless anyone feels differently, you know, I'd like to hold off on long presentations and keep it just a limited discussion.
Just a suggestion, Eric.
Yeah.
I think you're lumping two things together. I think what I saw on the agenda, maybe I'm, I'm wrong, was some discussion of citizen articles. Citizen articles have to be on the warrant they get on as a matter of right.
Yeah.
But there's also was some discussion of capital projects.
Capital project next week, they're not tonight.
Next week.
That's next week?
Yeah, that's next week. Yep.
It says, capital items will review, bill will be reviewed at the 318 meeting, Paul. That's what it says on the agenda.
Yeah. Sorry.
There was some other article, other than citizen articles, I thought that were in there.
There, there are other.
One from the clerk, one from council aging, and I think it does five citizen articles after that.
But those are citizen petition articles.
Yeah, which by right, as Paul said, you know, go on there. So we'll, we'll listen. I'm just kind of what we're doing right now is basically have, you know.
The DPDW is not a citizen's petition.
Oh, just two of those.
I think we just let these people present to us and then we can have a discussion about their warrant.
Yeah, they, they sort of want different sponsorships, et cetera.
This given the nature of what our vote is, I was trying to avoid a 20 slide PowerPoint presentation on something that is all we simply need is a, is they have a right to be on the article anyway. All right. Without that, and then we'll simply start with the first one right now. To amend GBL, chapter five, section three, registration and license requirements for dogs, town clerk. I guess Jackie, are you here?
Yes, I am. Hi. Yeah, we actually discussed this last meeting. So basically clarity of language that I would like to change that the last day to license your dog is March 1st. And if it falls on a weekend, it will be the first business day in March. That's basically the change. And also putting the word renew in there because it's, it's penalties are for renewing licensed dogs that are renewing, not like new puppies. If you don't register it by March 1st.
That seems, seems straightforward to me. If Mary's on, if Mary's on the call and I advocate this to go on a consent agenda, I think. I don't know if anyone has any questions about this.
I'd move to put it on the warrant.
All right. A second?
Second, or do you want to do them individually? I guess I'll second it.
Given that this is positions have by right, let's do this one by one. All in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I might as well. So like I said, I don't know if we even take a vote on the citizens positions. All right, next one up there, dedicated physical presence assessment from the Council of Aging. I guess who is here to speak on that?
I am Eric, Chris Winterfell.
Oh, thank you.
Hi. Yeah, so I'm a little rattled because I, of your, we've been here, I have my seniors here, we've been here for a couple of hours. And I also, we're looking, I'll be very brief then. What we're looking for in our warrant is we want to do a feasibility study to, for a senior center. You know, we've been at this for 10 years and we've, I did a little research and we've got a, an engineer who's going to, what I, we'd like him, he's been, he's been on the line here for a couple of hours. And he does have a, about a six minute presentation. I know, but we've been waiting too. And he, he's preeminent engineer who is, who does the, who has a great deal of experience doing feasibility studies in Massachusetts. And we are looking for $40,000 to fund that. So if you could, if you could give us a little bit of time.
All right. Are there any oppositionists on the board? Okay, just note that really we're just going to put this on the warrant or not. So, you know, I call it any kind of advocacy or whatever else will also be spent really before the larger advisory hearing as well. So just allow you to understand that this is solely just, we're voting to go on. So
And I do want to say, just to want to add one thing importantly, that this is 40,000 that is a, an amount of money that is, is here for who knows how long. This can go up. We're, this month, this price has been given to us because we're in COVID. That's a really good price and I'll let him tell you what they cover, but that price is, is probably not going to stay that low for a while. So this is an important aspect of this. And the fellow's name is Joel Bargman and he is, Joel, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, Joel.
Well, maybe I'll be brief because I can see there's desire to not go into great detail, but the
You don't want to hear what you have to say. I do want to say it. Don't take it as you hear it. It's just the nature of this meeting, what we're voting on.
I understand. The feasibility study, I'll, I'll just be brief, is, is a very objective and unbiased. Look at the town, various sites that may be available for a senior center to go on. It also determines how big that senior center needs to be. And then once you look at the sites and have a size of the building, it determines what the cost would be and what you would go to town meeting for as a subsequent funding mechanism when you go. And what you would go to town meeting for as a subsequent funding mechanism when you go for construction. So the whole goal of the feasibility study is to have an unbiased evaluation of what your options are. And then allow folks in the community to make a decision as to what the best site is and even the size of the building. So it doesn't give you the answer, but it gives you the data in a very unbiased way. So that you can then as a community make that decision. Um, the size of the community. That looks at the demographics, how many people are seniors, how many people are coming in the pipeline, et cetera. But, um, you know, it's, I was asked, you know, what do these cost in? Once you appropriate the money, the, the project goes out to advertisement for architects. So it, I was told Christina that the fee was ranged in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range, but, um, that towns are doing them in the forty thousand dollar range at this point in time. So that's the extent of the conversation.
So Joel, this is, uh, the select board. This would include having a team, maybe engineers also because in our town, septic and public water supply issues are, are central to this.
Correct. There, there'd be a civil engineer involved who would do geotechnical what the, I understand about the drinking water and the septic. There would be traffic engineers to evaluate your parking needs because seniors have very specific desires and what you want to do in a feasibility study is address all the issues that the voters are going to say. Have you covered this issue? Have you covered that? So that they know that when we're going to the next phase and, and selecting a site. Yeah, the site's slight, we, the right grades, we have enough parking spaces. We have enough building to accommodate not today's generation, but the next generation coming up behind us and, and all those kinds of questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
I guess I do have one other, uh, question about it, kind of what we discussed before. Is obviously, and I think it's a great idea to actually, um, look at other site, uh, site feasibilities. I keep hearing people saying this works, that doesn't work, and they're saying it off the cuff without any real thought and to actually look at it. Are you looking at existing buildings as well as just, um, property sites?
Absolutely. If you have, uh, so for example, you might take one site that has a building on that needs to be renovated and you want to compare that to an all new site. The, the, you'll measure all those factors. There are about twenty-five different factors from zoning to, as you mentioned, the well water, the septic, all of those factors get evaluated in, but then the cost gets to be factored in as well. So the renovation may be less expensive than a new building or vice versa. And you could evaluate any number of combinations.
Any questions on the board? Yeah, Paul.
So this seems to me to be a no brainer, but based on what he said about forty thousand now and maybe fifty thousand later, is there a way that we could get a, a advisory committee transfer and get this project going now rather than wait until May? And then there might even be a ballot question thereafter and drag this thing on before anything could get done. And my, we might end up saving ten grand if we're able to get this done now. So could I, I ask Dave Williams, uh, some questions about that? Dave?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, is, how much is in the reserve fund and what do you think about a, a sort of a reserve fund transfer now so that we can save money on this?
The reserve fund has enough funding in it, but Sharon would have to give us the exact balance. I think it's around three hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep, that's correct, David. We have not touched it yet this year.
Right.
Do we have any, on that same note, Paul, sorry to interrupt, but do we have any other anticipated needs for, I know we had a larger reserve fund this year for a reason, like, do we have any other anticipated, um, expenses? I know from either Jackie with, town meeting and that kind of, I just want to make sure we're not spending forty thousand now that.
Sometimes do a supplemental, George. Right now we budgeted eighty grand for snow plowing and we're, Sean's on here, but I think we're right around two hundred thousand.
Right, but that, we don't ever do the snow plowing with.
It's usually a supplemental.
Not when we don't have to, but it's more like if the Board of Health is running way over or the town clerk or anybody like that, like that's, that's what we're gonna, that's what we would need the reserve fund for. But if, if this is something, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm always hesitant, just from my experience on advisory of spending the reserve fund if, if we don't absolutely need to.
George, I can tell you that at this point in time, we have exhausted all of our COVID money. Okay. So we've gone through that, so.
Do you know any departments that you're concerned, Sharon, are there any departments that you're concerned about that are going to need reserve fund transfers just between now and the end of the year?
Well, you know, police overtime, which is typical, um, uh, what else? Ambulance reserve fund, um, that's going to need a little extra.
Legal fees possibly.
Oh, absolute, uh, legal fees are through the.
But that's all supplementals. That's not so much the reserve fund.
There hasn't been the, you know, the list of requests. Usually we would have a list of like ten items that are on placeholders on.
Sean, do you have any?
Do you want a list? Are you soliciting?
Nope.
While I'm unmuted, you will need money to cover the COVID if we don't get anything from the feds.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're running over already, so.
That was my, that's what I wanted to bring up before we spend forty thousand on a feasibility study. I want to make sure we're going to have enough to cover our operating needs. Um, Jackie, you have your hand up too, I see.
Yeah, I, I, it's just, um, I, I submitted money already for the annual town meeting because it is is very expensive having a Butler Street, but if we don't get any more, um, COVID money, then I should be able to handle it, um, within my budget. I'll have to, you know, move things around or whatever, but I should be able to cover it if I have to.
Can I ask a question though, Paul? I, I don't know what the intent of is doing it from, I would estimate this would take at least six months or possibly longer to do. The study of this time. This is a huge study.
Ten grand. If we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Why not sign a contract for forty now and not worry about getting socked with a, a bill for fifty if we sit around and get to it in June or July?
What you would do is you would, uh, you would, you would have a June thirtieth invoice, uh, that paid and then the rest would be encumbered to finish the, um.
Yeah, that's what we'd have to do because it's going to take a while to do. It won't be all of this year's.
I believe the consultant said that, uh, he would have a good portion of it done by June thirtieth, but, um.
I'd be very, very, very surprised.
A lot of engineering.
I do want to ask a question though, and I hesitate, I don't want to beat up the details about this. But the one thing particularly for looking for our reserve fund transfer on this, do we have a designated either someone, um, select board or someone from the executive staff somewhere that's actually going to be, um, assigned to basically oversee this? Because I know sometimes if it's, if it's just COA or just an advocate for something, you know, you get, you know, you get a certain result or just a volunteer. Is there someone basically else that we have? And I'm not trying to point fingers, be either Sean or, you know, someone from the select board or David or someone who's going to be involved with this, um, process as well?
Is a procurement issue. So the funds would be monitored and, and the contract would be signed, uh, by me. Invoices would come into COA, they would approve it and, uh, Sean would approve it and, um, then I would approve it for.
Care about the scope reviewing drafts, you know, they're going a certain direction, make sure it's a direction that they think the town kind of wants to go. Do you know what I mean? There's a certain amount, these are pretty broad, it's very broad scope. And, you know, they can actually, I've been involved with many, many, many studies like this before. And, you know, you can, you can make them go any different directions. I just want to make sure that someone kind of big picture overall is just kind of at least involved with it. It doesn't have to directly, it could be, you know, still report directly to the COA, but at least they have something that, you know, in case they know something about, I don't know, zone one or something like that. That can kind of control the direction that these things go.
Yeah, I expect to work closely with Chris and, um, and Susan on it.
Eric, Stephen Si has his hand up.
Oh, yeah, Steve. Steve?
While we're waiting, I would add, there's going to be more, it's not one person, like the Board of Health will be very involved in this, septic and well issues.
Right, okay. No, I get that, but you, but I think we've also seen, and I've seen it both in my volunteer and work environment, that you still need one or two people that are more detailed involved and present. If you have a, maybe run something, it's, it's going to be a waste of forty grand.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, Steve, you still on? Oh, I took the hand down? Okay. Alright, I.
Dropped off. He may still want to talk. I think he actually.
His hands back up.
Where is he?
Come back down again. Okay, change his mind. I, I do want to say that.
Just a second, Eric. I think he's trying to talk, just a second.
Yeah.
He's unmuted now.
Well, I'll just say it take up time is that I'm prepared to vote this on the actual warrant itself. I know if we come with another option, reserve or whatever else, it can be withdrawn or something along those lines. For the purpose of staying focused, for the purpose of this agenda item, I'm prepared to vote if, uh, if people want to make a motion to put this on the warrant.
Alright, so, sorry, can you guys hear me now?
I see, yes.
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to let you know that we did, we discussed this, um, last night at the, uh, advisory meeting. And, uh, we were fairly u- unanimous in not wanting this to be a reserve fund transfer, um, for a couple of reasons. One, we felt that this, uh, it, it warranted a discussion and vote by town meeting just because of the nature of this project and the fact that it will affect everybody in town. Uh, and then secondly, just philosophically because the reserve fund um, is really meant for, uh, you know, emergency situations, unforeseen things, things that are unavoidable. Um, which we did not feel that this, uh, um, categorized as an emergency. So, um, I, I do not believe that the advisory committee would, uh, be in favor of a reserve fund transfer for this.
Okay. Yeah, David?
I just wanted to say there, it was a warrant, it started out as a warrant article. Since then, we added it as just a single line in the capital, um, budget. So it's not really a warrant item anymore. It's a capital item. Because it is the beginning of a large, larger capital project if it, um, depending on the results of the study. So, um, if there, if there was going to be a reserve fund transfer, then that can take care of it. But if, if there isn't a reserve fund transfer, you need to make sure that these, um, you know, that it's not pulled off the warrant. That's, that's all.
I would move to leave it on the, to put it on the warrant, um, because if the, if the advisor, I actually agree with Steve's. That's why I was asking the questions about the reserve fund because it is supposed to be for emergency purposes and this is not an emergency, um, that I think we need to have it on the warrant. So the people, so the townspeople can vote on whether they want to spend the money on this.
David?
Verification, when you say you're on the warrant, um, as a capital article or as a, a major expanded warrant article? You know, an explanatory type warrant article.
Purpose of the vote?
They both accomplish the same thing. One just gives a lot more information and.
I don't think it's capital because it's not like a long-term asset. It's just a feasibility study, but it is, it's an article that we're spending money, but it's not so much.
I think it would get rolled into the capital budget. I think some of the, I think what it will be is a capital item that will be funded by free cash, not, we're obviously not bonding it.
I'm fine with it being a cap. I mean, it definitely, um, it does fit studies to actually contribute to larger capital funds, do classify as capital. Because it does potentially do it. But I'm willing also to vote tonight and then, you know, therefore it doesn't have to be on the agenda next week and then we can, you know, limit the, um, you know, quite a few people showed up and I'm, like I said, I've heard, I've heard nothing that I wouldn't support about this. Frankly, I'm not that's part of it, but even if it comes right down to it, I would support this article to pass a town meeting as well.
Just one other thought that, uh, there's a statute that says that in the last two months of the year, we can transfer money between departments. So those departments that have extra money they haven't spent, we can transfer to support other appropriations. So, uh, advisory needs to consent to that, but that's not a reserve fund transfer. This is simply making use of the.
Funds.
The available funds. Yes. So there's a, a, a second alternative here, which is not the, the reserve fund. But in, again, in May and June, we have the ability to, uh, fund this. I, again, I want to save the, the ten thousand dollars. But in the meantime, I would put it on as a capital line for the warrant. If that was the motion.
Yes, that was the motion. And the amount's forty, forty, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I support it. Looks like it's capital. As far as a transfer, I think it's operational funds. I don't think money can spend an effort after July one. Uh, it's more flexibility and capital. Uh, I, I still support this. I think it's a capital item for next week.
And I think it is important what Stephen said about the fact that the people, the townspeople should vote on this. It's not our decision. It's the, it's the citizens of Sherburne.
Absolutely.
Great job, Christina. Thank you for bringing, uh.
Yes.
Will this be a question? Will then this be a, um, like a ballot item on the, uh, after town meeting?
It, it depends. If we're using free cash, it doesn't have to be a ballot item. It would only be if we were bonding it.
It'd be unlikely to buy on that.
Right. So it would be, we'd be using free cash. So it wouldn't be a ballot. It would just be a vote at town meeting.
But let me ask a question kind of along those same lines. Whether it's a, where it's under the capital vote or whether it's a standalone item for, with a request of forty thousand dollars, would they both require two thirds of our majority?
That's a, Mary, are you on here?
I believe capital is just a majority.
Majority, I would say.
Because it's not being bonded.
Mary, Mary, Mary's on you. Let her clarify.
Right. Um, this would not, if it's not going to be borrowed, you don't need the two thirds.
Okay.
It would just be a majority vote.
Right.
Okay.
If you put this in, just for your own information, if you put this in just a straight article, um, the money can stay with the article. And you can put a sunset date on it if you want. So in other words, if you don't have to spend it in one year, the money just stays there so that if something comes up that, you know, if the town votes in favor of it, the money stays in the article until it is used up or until a sunset date arrives, at which time, you know, if that's part of the motion, then the money reverses to the town. But that's another way to look at it.
And if you don't sunset it, it will carry forward and then you would have to lapse it.
Right.
Lapse it back.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's a good idea to put sunsets in. We're, we're probably still cleaning up some articles from, you know, two thousand eight or five or whatever that didn't have sunset dates in them.
Aren't, aren't we, Mary, putting sunsets or trying to in all the capital projects too? Because sometimes like road projects and things that are multi-year.
Yes, um, but you don't need to do it quite so much if you're borrowing because you don't borrow until you, you know, until you need.
But we don't want funds that are not utilized out there. You know, we had that example, I think on Woodland Street, uh,
Yes.
Intersection.
That's right. And, and you know, it's even possible that there may be funds around in old articles that you could apply to this. I forget what's lying around now at this point, but.
Yep.
Thank you.
If Joel's still here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eric, I don't think we voted.
No, we have, they have not. Is there any vote relative to this being in a, uh, on the warrant, under the capital items?
Yes, that was George's motion. I seconded it.
Alright, you know, okay. Most of my George, second by Paul. Okay, I'm favorite George. Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I might as well. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one up is, uh, the use of compression brakes and engine brakes within the town limits. I believe someone, Steve Constantine, I believe is, uh, I was told is on the call.
Can I speak first, Steve? I just want to, um, the board, uh, he's asking for a sponsorship for the board to take over the article and bring, and the board bring this forward. That's, that's what he's talking about.
So this is, is this a citizen position though? Did they have the signatures to bring this before whatever?
No, this is an article that was placed on the, the, um, warrant, um, at request as if it was a placeholder until they could come talk to the board about sponsoring and carrying it forward. Is that correct, Steve?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Yes, okay. So it's potential by, uh, fought by the select board. Okay, Stephen, go ahead, please. Okay, okay, that's okay, so it's potential by uh fought by the select board, okay, Stephen, go ahead, please.
Okay, so so I'd like to to do a screen share if I can, and I promise I'm not going to um. Not going to, let me see, can you guys see that?
Yep. It's at your desktop, nice car.
Oh, thanks, um so so the request is to uh add a bylaw that would prohibit the use of compression and engine brakes within the town. Uh this was also talked about, as David said, um uh last night on the advisory meeting. Uh and there was some good discussion, it was good, good discussion with Chief Bento and some other folks who were in that, so just to go through this real quick. I under, I think everyone knows what this is, it's it's the loud noise that trucks make um when they break. Um it's it's a special brake that's installed on diesel engines, uh and it's a supplement to uh the standard braking system. Um so why do they use them, uh trucks use them to make sure that they, they're they, so that it doesn't wear and tear on the braking system and the engine and tires. So there are other towns that have bylaws on these and there are some considerations about safety. Um and the bylaws that 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 I've seen have something that says uh they could be used in an emergency situation to avoid injury or accident. So several problems with brake, Jake brakes, but the one that mostly concerned about is the uh the high decibels, the the loud noise. For these, the expectation is that as we come out of COVID, this is gonna get worse, uh there's gonna be more traffic, more trucks, so we're gonna expect to uh. See more, um if you go out to Sherburne next door, uh there's been quite a bit of discussion about this. Uh and there are some some hotspots that were discussed, uh they're listed out here, I'm not gonna rattle them off, but uh. You can see that they are pretty much areas that have traffic lights, stoplights, hilly areas. So several towns in Massachusetts already have bylaws around these, uh. You've got, for example, Hingham, Air, Boxford, Norwell, Holyoke. Uh the uh the bylaws themselves are pretty straightforward, um then they're not that complicated. So for Hingham, uh you can read it here, um it's cause they just don't let you use the the Jake brakes, the compression brakes. Uh um within the town limits unless there's a uh a a safety reason to do so. And then the same thing for Norwell, uh again, pro- prohibiting the uh the use of these on all streets in the town. Um again, unless there's a uh an emergency situation, um and the the normal actually goes out and says that. There's a fine not to exceed three hundred dollars. So that's that's what the the bylaw would look like. So the downside uh tough to enforce, but a lot of things are tough to enforce, I mean, people go. Flying through stop signs and stoplights, but you don't have laws against that, that you don't pull the laws out, you still have a law against it. Um so I could, Dave can probably talk about this, um Chief Bento. Uh we talked about last night that uh master law chapter ninety section sixteen. Uh regarding offensive illegal operation of motor vehicles. It, there's a reference in the law about harsh objection, sorry, harsh objectionable or unreasonable noise. But there really isn't anything specific to um compression engine brakes. Um where we have had some problems in the past, uh I know Chief Bento has had a a signboard. Um a trailer that's been moved to those areas, um which I believe has helped. Uh the problem with the signboard is obviously you can't be any everywhere in town, uh could be used for other purposes as well. Uh and also it can't be used in the winter time because there's uh snowbanks along the side of the road. Um so along with this, I would, I'd love to see uh placement of some signs in strategic areas. Bottom line, voting yes for the bylaw will help make sure we're a more quiet, peaceful, livable town. And that's about it, I've got the the by, not the bylaw, the general law, I've got that spelled out here, you can see. Uh no person operating vehicle, shot sound the bell horn, other device. Um is no mention of the compression or Jake brakes. These are some of the signs that you've seen, just some examples, this one is actually in Medfield. And then, what's it gonna cost, uh so this sign here would cost fifteen dollars, post is gonna be another twenty dollars. So it's, I think it's a a good thing for the town, I think it's a fairly inexpensive fix. So there are a few things that are being looked at, um Chief Bento is gonna look to see how many um complaints, how many citations were issued. Um based on this general law, um I made a call today to uh. The town of Medfield, they have the sign, uh but it doesn't look like they have the bylaw, so that's an option as well, maybe putting up the. The signs to keep people from using the uh these compression brakes, and I've also got calls into uh Norwell and Hingham. To get a better understanding of uh of uh what what tickets they've had, uh and how it's. How, whether this has helped or 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 how it's actually worked out. That's, that's about it.
Well, thank you, I give my seat, I believe, um I believe uh chief, um I may be probably in line to speak on this next.
Hey, Mr. Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, can.
Thank you, um as was mentioned, we did discuss this last night, and uh my position on this was. I would prefer to stay with the best general law, uh although it does not specifically mention in ninety sixteen Jake breaks. Uh when I first attended commercial vehicle enforcement through the Mass State Police, this is what they directed us to cite Jake break use. When it's inappropriate, so if someone's on a highway or someone's on a roadway where there's no houses and they're not causing any. Uh you know, noise problems, um then it's fine, but if they're doing it in a neighborhood, uh they're doing it downtown Sherburne at the traffic lights. The ninety sixteen is appropriate, we've used that for years, I I did look at the numbers, I mentioned to Stephen last night, I would do that. Twenty twenty, as I expected, was low, there were only five issued for ninety sixteen. And in twenty nineteen and eighteen, there were nine each year, but back in seventeen, uh they were twenty five and in sixteen, there were thirty. And again, in fifteen, there were twenty five, so um it it is something that we've had to enforce. Uh I would think we can continue to enforce, and I just prefer issuing citations through a uniform citation with the uh. The registry of motor vehicle component, uh rather than on a time bylaw citation. And I also think the fine at at ninety sixteen is a little more appropriate with the uh added assessment to the ninety, chapter ninety five, it's a fifty to five dollar citation. Um and and with a surcharge component, so I think it does send a message without having to have an excessive three hundred dollar bylaw. And I'm also not a huge fan of signage, um you know, that Medfield sign. Basically gives the green light to those trucks that after they've gone that mile or mile and a half or whatever the sign says, then they're free to use it. And Medfield has several of those signs throughout the town and and I'm not really thrilled at the position of them myself and um. I've been experienced now for a long time, I've lived in Medfield for thirty years, but I haven't made it a point to uh complain to them about those signs. And I know how the town feels, we've gone through a lot of uh change in signage over the years, you know, signs were put up everywhere. And um you you know, um pe- people aren't paying attention to the real important ones like the speed limits, uh are they really gonna pay attention to? To a Jake break, I think we can use that signboard, this is an as an education tool. And and I think we, you know, educate our officers to go out and do the enforcement and the education roadside, and if. You know, companies or or drivers continue to, you know, cause these problems, I think us getting phone calls that somebody is upset about the noise. Certainly triggers the ninety sixteen component that it's harsh and objectionable and and unreasonable, so. Um that's kind of my position on that, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I have one question about the signage, I cause I guess you can sign without without a bylaw, you know, just go back to MGL. Instead of saying like next half mile or whatever else, what are your thoughts, and like it was signed simply said at the town line? No engine brakes, Jake brakes, whatever, within town limits.
If you did that on every street entering Sherburne. And then you'd be doing that without upsetting somebody like in my situation. And you know, I guess you'd have to give some real flat though to some of the areas in town, like there there may be areas where a Jake break. You know, would be okay, so you know, how do you really ban the whole town? But you know, if you wanted to try that as an advisory uh or as a warning tool, uh I'm not opposed to that. I I just wouldn't wanna see a sign in the center of town that says no Jake break for the next half mile. And then they're going, you know, north through the center of town, and now it's okay, free for all on the Jake break when they're going by, you know, dust to stand or something.
Yeah.
And you and you get people down in that neighborhood that are upset about.
Alright, um so I'll take it back to the board, is there any discussion among the board about what you've heard between uh Stephen and uh the chief, yeah, Paul?
So I have category, comments in two categories, first, just as a lawyer. Let's say two things, number one, uh you can't enforce a bylaw like this without a sign. The sign is mandatory. And you can't enforce a sign without a bylaw. In other words, you put up a a uh sign, and I've I've had this happen in other towns where they just. Decide to put up a speed limit sign on their own, without any lawful basis. You can't get a court to enforce it, that has to be the bylaw. So the notion, now again, I'm just speaking as a lawyer, uh the the notion that you could do the signs without the bylaw. Or do the bylaw without the signs, that that doesn't work, neither works. Or to put it another way, if you're going to do this, let's do it right, and to do it right, you need to adopt both. The second point I would make is that the features, the safety features of trucks. Is regulated by the United States, and so there's been uh. There used to be the Interstate Commerce Commission and now the Surface Transportation Board and so on and so on, but trucks are highly regulated. And so again, as a lawyer, I'm concerned about what I would call federal preemption. That if the federal government has decided that Jake brakes brakes are. An appropriate feature for trucks, for us to prohibit them. Is potentially conflicting with state law, so let's for example, say that the. United States says cars have to have steering wheels, and we say, well, in Sherburne, you can't use a steering wheel. Our judgment about what's safe doesn't count. That judgment about what is safe is made by the United States. And sets certain standards for vehicles that are operated in the United States.
I do wanna add, uh let me respond, it's okay, I'd like to respond to two of those items there, um I believe, and then see if anyone else has thoughts. I still thought you could sign it, cause it is an MGL, so right now that this this bylaw would be essentially more strict than the MGL. But you still sign based on the MGL, that you can still put aside no Jake base, so if there are provisions. To actually basically like, I think Chief Bento said, to make it whatever obnoxious or whatever the term is, you know, to use um. Essentially, the uh the the sound thing, that you could actually sign based based on that. The second thing is, um I'm fully not sure also, so if if uh state law basically DOT allows. For additional braking mechanisms, it's not the only brakes the car has, the car has like one steering wheel, so might not be the same analogy. But the car has different brakes, it has the the drum disc brakes, and also has the engine brakes. Use one or the other, use the engine brakes to save the wheel brakes, but the wheel brakes will stop the car, actually better from my understanding. So I don't think you're taking away a safety option, what you're doing is to take away an option that trucks have. To cut their expense, to cut their expense on wearing out their brake pads and so on like that. That they can still brake brake safely and actually more safe from my understanding, I believe the wheel brakes will stop a shorter distance. Than a Jake break, my understanding, so I don't think we're exactly limiting that by allowing this uh by allowing this law, just to clarify. If anyone else has any thoughts on it.
Well, I I hadn't finished, I mean, I, there was two parts, two categories of comments, I was trying to say, the first category was. Just speaking as a lawyer that I had those two legal issues, but I had a second category of comments. The second category was that. Here we are in the middle of COVID nineteen, and so I don't see the fact that he hadn't gone out and gotten. Ten signatures on this as something that I would penalize him for. And that where the issue before us is to see whether this is something the voters want. To adopt and, you know, let town council weigh in about whether it's legal or not, or what language needs to be in there. I'm fine with that, I know I'm not town council, that someone. Who's gone to this effort and comes to our meeting and and uh is trying to do something that's. Good for the community, for a quieter community. On the issue of whether or not to put this on the warrant, I would say, let's give the guy a break. Uh in recognition of COVID nineteen, and let's put it on the warrant and let the voters decide.
Alright, any other discussion amongst the board?
Well, I I, if I'm understanding Paul right, I think I agree, I don't think I would wanna sponsor this or have the town sponsored, I'd like, I would like it to be. This citizens, so if that's what Paul meant by that, I I think it, he seems to be the proponent.
So, but he would have to get it, so right now, he's just saying he's officially requesting the board sponsorship for this. So I guess, is there anything applicable to, I think we have to either deny, except to deny that sponsorship, and then he'll go get a citizen petition.
I'm not supporting, uh I wouldn't support it being sponsored by us.
Okay.
I I agree, I think if he wants to put it on as a citizen's petition, great, but I don't, I wouldn't sponsor it as a selectman. I I agree with Dave Bento's, I mean, I don't think we need additional laws if he can enforce it as it is.
I'd almost want a little bit more info, to be honest with you, I read the background material, I might almost, if they take a vote abstaining, cause I want a little more, but I fully see the point. Um if we, if I, what, we gave twenty five tickets one year, whatever, so clearly we are ticketing to this. Let me ask one question, to either David or Steve or whatever else, um. What are the nature of the complaints, I'm uh just concisely, is it like a handful of people complaining a lot? Or is it actually like fifty people complaining about this throughout town, just to get an idea of the actual, you know, are we fixing a problem that doesn't exist or not?
So Eric, I can uh um from a personal standpoint, okay, I I live at thirty three North Main Street, right across from the Heritage. Uh and at the main like there, the one that delegate North Main, um could probably hear these about at least five or six of them a day. Uh that these Jake breaks are being used, um sometimes I hear them very early in the morning, usually not late at night though. Um so that's, that's my complaint, the other, the other folks that have also complained about this have been on Western Ave, the Desa Trucks. Um and other parts of town, all you gotta do is go on uh Sherburne next door and and uh. There's some discussions, those will pop up every now and then about the annoying use of these brakes.
I think Jackie has her hand raised also.
Oh yeah, oh Jackie, yep, yes.
Yeah, hi, it's it's, I just wanted to comment because I I'm hearing citizens petition and the warrant is closed. So it cannot go in as a citizen's petition because it was not submitted to me by the deadline with signatures. For me to certify.
Okay, so but there is an opportunity for the select board to actually sponsor an article still, is there not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, and if we're sponsoring it, then I could see adding a sentence there that the board of selectmen is sponsoring this at the request of. A citizen, put his name in as a courtesy to him, given the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Yeah, I might consider sponsoring it, ironically, I don't know if I'd vote for it or not, but I tend to be very liberal when it comes to what goes before the people and goes before town meeting. And if they, you know, they can advocate and get it, cause I actually, I kinda side with the chief on this, that maybe it's not necessary. Um but and also I tend to bias against four people deciding what gets voted on or not versus the overall um open town. Um alright, so with that, I'm gonna go straight then to sponsor, realizing that there's no more opportunity for citizen petition. Is there any motions or further discussion about the select board sponsoring this article?
I I agree with you, Eric, that makes sense what you just said, that let the, let them have a chance to debate it in front of the town. Even though I may not support it, it's still, but I I think we could, we could do that.
So is that?
I'll make a motion to include it in the warrant.
I would make it with Paul's caveat there, that it cites the citizen who's supporting or proposed that we support it.
Absolutely, I'll take that as a. Absolutely. I'll take that as a benefit.
As a courtesy to the proponent.
Yep. Is that a second Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. So all in favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I am as well. All right. So at least it's on the warrant for discussion. Okay. I've been going through my notes so much, I lost track of where my agenda is.
Well, the next two, I don't even know if we need to vote on because they're both citizens petitions that I think have the signatures already, don't we?
Right. But they've been waiting for a long time. At least let them, they wanted to present to us. So.
Explain their article. So I'd, I'd like to hear it.
Okay.
So with that is, um, let's see, addition to, uh, general bylaws, chapter thirty one, ban of sales, a new fur products within the town of Sherburne. Um, let's see, I believe that is Jeanette Schlickmeyer. Do I have that? Schlickmeyer. No, thank you.
Schickenmeyer.
Uh, yes.
So, yeah.
Uh, please present.
Okay. Well, I, um, actually, when I was invited to attend, I was told that it was really just to, and be available to answer questions. Um, so for the sake of time, I really don't have a presentation that was going to be next week for the, um, or for the advisory committee. Um, I know that I have, I have said, yes, I thought you'd be happy for that. Um, I have sent, uh, I hope that you all have received plenty of information. Um, both some back sheets and some, um, frequently asked questions. And I'm really here just to see if there's any questions I can answer for you about this and hope that you're in favor of this.
Maybe.
I, I do have a question. Um,
Yes.
Just, I want to know a little more detail about what this includes. I mean, I wouldn't, I would hope it wouldn't um, affect any farms that have, you know, sheep with their wool, that kind of thing. I just, I just, you know, I want to, I want to be sure it's not, um, overreach. I don't know where any, anywhere in town that does sell fur, but that's, that's kind of where, where my point is.
Right. Yes. And it does not affect, you know, any of your farm animals. It is pretty much your fur bearers that they use in clothing and decorations and, um, accessories. And yes, there are currently no places that do sell new fur. It does only cover new fur too. Um, so if the antique store in town had, you know, something that had fur in it or a resale shop opened in town, then that certainly, um, would not be included in this ban. It would include if there was maybe a little boutique that opened up in Sherburne. Um, they would not be able to sell new fur. It does not cover, it does not include, um, shearling or cowhide or, or like you said, any, any of the farm animals.
How about leather projects in general, like non-fur leather products? Okay.
No, it does not include leather. It, it, um, includes just, you know, the pelt with the fur on it from the fur bearing animals. Most of these animals, eighty-five to ninety-five percent of them are raised on fur farms um, under horrific conditions, um, causing massive amounts of pollution. And also, uh, we learned are huge carriers of COVID nineteen. So, you know, there's many, many different aspects why this, I believe, is a good law. And I think that it would be favorable in Sherburne because the residents of Sherburne in the past have always voted quite favorably for any laws, um, having to do with animal protection. Um, let's see, there was one in nineteen ninety-six, I believe it was the to ban, um, leg hold traps and seventy percent of the voters voted in favor of that. There was the two thousand eight Greyhound banning Greyhound and another seventy percent voted in favor of that. And then in two thousand, uh, was it two thousand sixteen, the, um, farm animal, the to ban the cruel confinement of farm animals, blocking seventy-eight percent of Sherburne voted in favor of that. So, um, I think it just will represent the core values of Sherburne. And I think, um, I think it's a really great bill. Wellesley just passed it. And, you know, this is, um, it's better to pass it, I feel, before the industry is in. Before, you know, there are any retailers that sell the fur. And it just lets retailers know you're welcome here in Sherburne, but not selling cruelly obtained products.
It's being proactive, especially as other communities ban it around you. There's kind of less and less spots or places to go, I imagine.
Yes. And, and to get laws passed, especially on the state level, it's better if we could get each, each community, you know, passes them in their community. And then the state will take over and pass it as a state law. And then as more states take over and pass it, it can become a federal law. So it's just really the, the groundwork of, um, starting, you know, to stop this horrific industry. They kill over a hundred million animals a year. For for a hundred million. And you can just imagine the resources and the pollution um, that's derived from this unnecessary, totally unnecessary um, thing. They've come up with so many good bofers that you can't even tell the difference.
I agree. All right.
I'm just hoping for your support.
Although I don't know if you vote officially in support on something like this with a citizen's petition.
Right. No, I know.
I think we will. With the advice, I think on warrant articles like this, we will vote before the advisory hearing. When we will go through the warrant one night. That's what we've typically done in the past anyway, is gone through the warrant and voted on all the articles, whether we support them or not.
Makes sense. All right. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just a quick question. Who, who is the person who enforces it? What town official enforces it?
Imagine when you get a license to actually do business, it'd be a restriction, wouldn't it? So actually if someone comes in with a clothing store, um, whatever license they knew, need to do that business would be the enforcement, I was assuming. So imagine it be.
I don't think you need a license for a clothing store.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that question, but I would be more than happy to try to find out for you.
I'm just wondering, let's say the town votes unanimously for this. What what town official is going to end up having the responsibility and have it assigned to that person to take care of, take care of it?
Genie, do you want to hand up for Genie?
Yeah, I believe it's either animal control or the police, whatever, um, authority has, you know, who has the authority to write a citation.
Genie's a licensing guru. I'd like to hear from her.
No, it's more that if they open a store in the town, they have to go to the zoning, uh, board of appeals and that would certainly be part of the um, decision made by the board. Um, and then they could decide at the time, who would, you know, the, the zoning enforcement officer would be part of it also? Possibly.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. That'd be the building commissioner essentially.
Right.
Okay. Just kind of a thought. All right. Is there anything else amongst the board or citizens in general? I think we're good on this one. Uh, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, okay. Next one we have on here is the, uh, um, addition to, uh, general bylaws thirty-two ban on retail sale, dogs, cats, rabbits, rabbits in pet shops in town. Um, is this Larissa, Larissa Rummanov? Is Larissa Rummanov here? She might want to.
She logged in earlier, I know.
I see her. I can't hear. Yeah, I see her. She's there.
Okay.
You are.
Yeah. Um, would you like to speak on this? And then let me official presentation to speak a little bit on it.
Yes, I'll be very short. So basically I'm sponsoring this, um, petition on the humane pet stores by law. And it is known that most pet stores acquire animals from the commercial animal facilities, also called puppy mills. And the purpose of this bylaw is similar to the previous one. Is to disrupt the distribution pipeline used by these facilities that impose unprecedented suffering to the animals. And, uh, many puppy mills, uh, most of them are USD licensed. And, uh, it means that they adhere to so-called animal welfare X standards. And I'm just, uh, say a couple of words about this regulations. What does it mean animal welfare standards? For instance, according to these regulations, dogs can be kept in, uh, in wire cages just six inches larger than their bodies for the entire life. They denied adequate any exercises, socialization, and they, uh, can be kept in extreme temperatures or denied any elementary vet care. So conditions are unprecedented. And it's, uh, and even this, uh, law standard, um, regulations are not strictly enforced. Uh, and you probably ask why do we need this bylaw in this particular community, our community. It's certainly preventive measure uh, that ensures that our community doesn't support unhuman animal treatment. Uh, and also, it's also part of a bigger effort, namely closing the borders of the whole state to the animal, uh, animals from, uh, puppy mills. So, and at this point, by picking up the national momentum, many towns like Boston, Eastville, Hollister, Cambridge, Stonem and Marshfield are closed for, uh, animals, uh, from puppy mills. And several states also close this, uh, close their borders for such animals. Uh, such as states like California, Maryland and Maine. So, um, practically, um, I just believe that, uh, you know, humane treatment of animals is reflect core values of this community.
All right.
And therefore this bylaw should be adopted, hopefully will be adopted by this community.
Because I have two questions. So this, this bylaw is modeled after, after similar bylaws that you just cited in other local communities, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
My second question is, and I must admit, I didn't read it in detail. Um, will this affect, um, like, uh, animal shelters that actually adopt pets with donations? Like I adopted a calf from the Medfield Animal Shelter and I had a great experience doing that. Will this affect any of their opera, operate for an operation like that comes to town?
Of course not. No, we're talking only about, uh, commercial animal facilities, uh, which is, uh, a commercial, commercial facilities which raise animals and, uh, animal shelters are not one of them. We're talking about retail sales of animals obtained from puppy mills.
I just want to make sure his language doesn't accidentally affect something. Sometimes you can create a law unintentionally affects, uh, something more altruistic or a well, a well-intended action.
Well, to that point, we do have farms in town that sell cats and dogs.
Or rabbits or.
Yeah. So that we have farms in town that are commercial farms, so they're a commercial operation. And they.
That are selling animals.
Sell animals, including pets.
Uh, this bylaw, uh, does not affect, uh, private breeders which raise their animals and sell them on their properties. Usually, uh, puppy mills, they are disconnected from the, from the consumers because they don't want to show what the conditions, uh, of this animal, how, how this animals are raised. Private breeders are not affected by this bylaw.
No, I, I'm not, um.
I just, I don't think it's relevant in our town, to be quite honest, because we don't have pet shops and, I mean.
And a farm's not really a private breeder. They're a business. You know, they're an agricultural business, but they're not a pri, I just think the word pet shop would be hard to define.
Hey, can I ask Genie a question? Genie, just sorry, because you went dormant there for a minute. Um, is there a special license a pet shop would require if it came to town? Is there, is there, do you know offhand?
Yeah, it would, it would require a permit, uh, through the zoning board. It would only be allowed to be in the business district. You couldn't have it in a residential district. So the zoning board would have to, uh, do the actual permitting.
Just curious.
Somebody came, we had a bylaw that said you couldn't have a pet store and somebody came and wanted to open a pet store, they couldn't open a pet store.
Yeah. I'm just curious, there's other limitations that came through. If they have, if we don't have this bylaw, do they, you know, could we limit like how a pest store operates? Are they going to not allow it? I was curious how much by right they would have to, you know, if.
I don't know, because we do have a bylaw that allows for retail. And if somebody wanted to open a pet store, that would come under retail. Again, in the business district, which is fairly small, but.
I'd like to actually, um, maybe speak to like one or two other communities that's passed a similar bylaw. Cause I mean, obviously you know of animal shelters or farms and stuff like that, or breeders and so on like that. Is there an accidental, you know, or is it, is it written in such a way that you wouldn't accidentally limit, uh, good operation? That's all, that's all I'm wondering. Maybe it is. Maybe it is written appropriately. And if another community has done it, maybe it can be done successfully. I just don't know about it.
I think that's true, Eric. That's my concern. If you think about if anybody has pets, but pet world in Natick actually has a cat shelter in, housed in the pet shop.
I was there this afternoon looking for a cat, actually.
Yes.
Basically, it is by law encourage pets, pet stores to, uh, breed animals from shelters and using them.
They have their own shelter actually inside the store. But yeah, so I, I guess maybe we don't understand enough about it. And when we actually have the town meeting, you could present it, but.
Yeah.
I think it, I'm still concerned about what Eric said and also what George said.
Yeah. I think, I think sometimes with this, actually the last three, to be quite honest, adding bylaws that are not relevant to the town and just restrict, adding additional restrictions just to add restrictions, Doug, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Sometimes I have a little bit of a libertarian side to me and I don't want to add laws for no reason.
So actually, let me, let me state this then, because obviously we don't take a vote. So Larissa, let me take this. When you do present this before advisory and look for sponsorship from advisory select board, take these comments to heart. And these are the things I think the, the questions people will want answered. So maybe take it as that as, has a, you know, constructive input on the, you know, questions that I think you're, you're going to see in a few weeks when you come to the real presentation and look for official sponsorship of this.
Yes, I'll think about these questions and, but it's my understanding that, uh, this bylaw doesn't affect any private breeders. Uh, even if they sell from their own properties and many of them, of course, they, they, they profit, uh, get, make profit from this, uh, from this things. But we're talking about, about commercial breeders, uh, who sell their animals, uh, distantly from, uh, some puppy mills into the pet stores. And they, they're disconnected from the consumers in order to, to make sure that the conditions of the animals are not safe.
That's, that's important.
Responsibilities for the, uh, consequences of their breeding. And this is a separate question, which is, you know. Yeah, I will, uh, I will take this in consideration and then we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I think if you bring up presentation and also I think examples of other communities, this community has done this and they successfully allow these other, other means to be done. I think will go a long way. That's just my advice.
And, and also Paul's earlier point on a prior article, how would you enforce this if a pet shop was in town and they were getting them from a private breeder versus a puppy farm or whatever, how would we know that by, you know, they could start out selling them from private breeders and six months later be getting it from puppy farms. We would have no way of knowing.
It sounds like similar though to the other bylaw. We'd actually be kind of the zoning enforcement agent probably. You'd have to know, you have to know, you're right. Anyone can sneak any, I mean, that, that's the whole nature of laws. Anyone, you know, sneak anything personally, but.
It's a worthy cause. We're not necessarily criticizing your cause. It just seems to be problematic in terms of implementation.
Uh, do you know, uh, I must respond to this question. This by law requires record keeping. So animals, uh, it should be known where animals comes from.
Yes.
But if it's private breeding, local. And this is essential part of this bylaw.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Be for advisory in a few weeks. All right. So, um, I'm gonna move on. I'll just move on to the next two, since it's the same presenter. And, uh, you know, I think we touched on one of these a little bit last year and I think it got polled and reminded me of the history of it. And I believe, um, obviously goes to Sean. I think talk a little about these reverse, um, couple of reserve funds, one for, um, one for facilities, one for, oh, one, one for the creation of facilities and then the funding of facilities, uh, reserve fund. All right, Sean Flores here is.
So, um, I can talk a little bit about this, but we're still, um, I can't, I don't think I can share my screen, but we're still working on the wording and, and exactly what this is going to be. Um, there's other communities that have done something similar. Um, the way we worded it, I can tell you isn't, isn't the way it's going to be. It's not going to be a stabilization fund that would take a, a separate town meeting vote to, to spend the money. The way we worded it, I can tell you, isn't, isn't the way it's gonna be. It's not gonna be a stabilization fund that would take a, a separate town meeting vote to, to spend the money. Which is not what we're trying to do. We're not trying to overcomplicate it. So we're working with council to, to refine the wording, but the, the intent is that there will be a fund. For lack of a better term, it, it's more like a revolving fund that'll exist and each year after that, we'll just create, we'll just vote to, to put some sum of money into the fund. That way, we don't have overlapping annual town meeting articles like we have now. At any given time, we'll have two or three consecutive annual town meeting articles that, that get a little bit messy to clean up at the tail end, because you gotta flush them out to zero or close to zero as you're spending across it, and the projects tend to overlap fiscal years. So, so this would clean up a lot of that. It doesn't change anything on the oversight. Town meeting's still gonna vote on the capital improvement plan of the facilities. And the same procurement oversight will, will still take place with the larger projects especially.
Okay, and just to clarify, are you looking for the select board to sponsor this article tonight? These articles.
Well, I, I intended to stay on the warrant, that's for sure.
Is, is it on the, as the claim is, the David question is, on the warrant, do you need a vote tonight to basically sponsor it and get it on the warrant? I just want to make that, just like the other one we just did.
This is one of your departments, so it's really your, it's select board is bringing this.
I've moved to leave it on the warrant.
On, so I was gonna say, is it on the warrant? You need a vote? I'm just making sure we're just.
I would vote it just so you.
I'd vote, I think we need to vote to make sure it's included.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see a little more be vetted by the time it goes to advisory. That's my one.
One possibility is, because this really relates to the capital budget for facilities. We could discuss it, because we set up above the three eighteen meeting, we're reviewing capital items. So maybe Sean might have it more fleshed out by three eighteen. But it relates to capital, Sean and I have talked about this for part, you tell me, Sean, five years or so.
Well, and, and to that point, it would, the, the second one isn't really wording, other than it's gonna get obviously renamed. The, the title of it may change as, as the funds title changes, but we will be talking about how much to put in there. And, and of course, the, you know, the downfall, if the whole thing got pulled, we'd have to actually add something into the capital lined below to, to then create a, a town meeting article as we normally would have.
Well, there's been a motion made in a second, let's take a vote on it, so it's clear that this is in the warrant.
I think it's over. All right, on favor, George. I think he said, yeah. I think I look right at A there. I am as well. All right. Keep this in, very good.
Did you do both?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Um, was that, okay.
That's a good point, Sean. I would, I can revise, can I revise my motion?
Yeah.
Say that it includes both articles.
Okay, very good. Seconded, I'm gonna say seconded by Paul, is that correct?
Yes, I accepted that. I thought that's what we were voting on.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm still gonna, just because of do it, just do it right, whatever. On favor, George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
All right. All right, very good. See you back in there. So that's it for the, for the warrant articles, agenda item. Next is number nine, consideration of routine business. Are there any select board reports or if Jeff, George, you had something?
I just had one quick thing. I just wanted to recognize that Sherburne was named one of the top places to live in Boston Magazine.
Oh, no.
No, it's actually for the real estate market, it's good. We've talked about it in the past that we want to mark Sherburne as one of the desirable suburbs, and it was listed as, it was the first suburb listed as a good place to, to move to. And you can see it, I mean, there's houses go on the market right now, and they sell immediately. There's nothing.
Yep. That's. Above listing, above listing, exactly.
Yeah, most houses are selling above their listing price, and they're selling the first weekend they go on the market.
I hope so. I got one going on about, my mother's going on about two weeks, so.
I would always, I have the goals, but they haven't changed since last time. I would propose since we're three hours into this. And we have a couple executive sessions that we defer the goals to the eighteenth.
Okay.
We're working on some of them already, and we, I haven't changed. I did some minor word smithing to the language, but you've already seen them, so I don't know that we need to spend the time tonight.
Okay.
If you, if you disagree, I'm happy to go through it.
No, I think, I think we're.
You haven't changed, because we've seen them, we like them, we vetted them. You know, if there's no significant change to that, I think we're in good shape.
What I could do is just send them around in advance of next time's meeting. We could just vote on it without reviewing them, maybe.
Yes.
And then we'll post, I would like to get them posted on the town website, so that it communicates to what we're doing.
That's a very good idea, absolutely. Okay, how about town administrator or any other staff reports?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thanks Sharon McPherson, the finance director for her service to the town, and she's announced that she is retiring effective April second. So the bylaw allow, or requires the selectmen to appoint an interim person at some point. And then you have sixty days after the vacancy to fill the permanent position. Or then you have to re-up the interim person. So I wanted to put this on the agenda for March eighteenth to discuss at that point about the interim.
Okay, yeah, very good. I agree we should. And also, yeah, Chairman's on there. Well, thank you very much, my fair service to this town. I'm sure we'll be seeing you more. I believe last day is April ninth, did you say? In a second, okay.
Thank you, Sharon.
One thing, one thing to consider on that March eighteenth meeting, I would like to discuss if there's any warrant articles related to that position. I, I, there's been some discussion about the fact that the position, maybe we should, we should consider having the, the finance director position reporting to the TA, which it doesn't now, because, which I think we, we really should make sure that's included, because I, I would like to have a discussion about that.
Yeah, and there requires a modification of existing bylaws, so therefore a town meeting.
Have to, we'd have to open the warrant to put that on town meeting, so.
There are a number of things in there to, that the bylaw should clean up, and that's why I wanted to point out that you're gonna have sixty days after the vacancy. So you're gonna have three months from now, basically, to work.
Right, but right now would be the time to open the warrant if we wanted to. Yeah.
Yeah.
To, to change anything with the bylaw related to that position.
Okay.
Okay, now meaning the eighteenth is what you're saying.
I was saying, yeah, I'm saying this time here, considering we have a town meeting.
David, David, is that position advertised, or is that gonna be soon advertised?
No, no, the permanent position we will talk about after we talk about the interim position. But the, it's a, it's a normal hiring in accordance with the personnel admin plan, so.
Okay.
When the board is ready to post it to be filled permanently, that's when we will post it.
Okay.
I, I didn't understand that, what, what you just said.
It's not posted, and I'm not planning to post it, you know, automatically unless the board says to post it, the permanent position. Because we need to work out the interim thing first, I think.
We're gonna work, we're gonna talk about the interim on the eighteenth meeting.
Yeah.
And then we'll deal with posting the permanent position after that.
Yeah, you may need time before you want to post it.
We're not, we're not posting the interim?
Uh, I haven't posted the interim, no, and we will talk about that on the eighteenth. And, but for now, everything is, will run smoothly. Sharon has Deb Seifring as an assistant accountant with all the authority. And again, Sharon's on here till April second, so you'll have time on the eighteenth to discuss the particulars of what you want to see happen.
Well, no more than eighteen, that sounds like. All right, any other staff reports? Okay. So, further ado, we'll close the, the open session and go into an executive session. And as previously indicate, we may be, actually, at this point, since we voted on number six, I doubt we will, but we reserve the right to come back into open session. I think it's unlikely we reserve that right to come back in open session, because that's how the agenda was drafted. Therefore, as chair, I, I move that we move into an executive session, and the executive session is warranted for the agenda items as previously read by the town administrator.
To drop two of them.
We dropped two and three.
Actually, it was just a recommendation.
When we revised the agenda, that was dropped.
Eric had said that he'd take that on recommendation. Okay. An advisement, that's what the wording was.
I, I would like to actually meet on simply item two. I don't think that to mean that I'm free, but item two, I mean, George, you and I did some work.
Yeah, we did, yeah, exactly.
Might as well.
Quick, it's gonna be a very, very quick discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Column also, I think that's good.
Want to have the opportunity, I, I want to have the opportunity to meet on these agenda items. You're right, one will just be quick, one may have no discussion at all, but I don't want to, I don't want to limit unnecessarily.
So I second your motion.
Okay. So all in favor, George?
I.
Paul?
Paul.
Paul?
We're moving for executive session, Paul.
You froze on me.
Oh, you're frozen, yeah.
You froze, froze on me. I.
Okay, I, very good. Okay, Jeff?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Okay. Wait till we hear the recording is turned off.